Meeting called to order.
Good evening. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 1046 at SEC, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising the Star Ledger on the level of Cokey, Haiti Progress, and Luz Americana newspapers, and by distribution to the administrative offices of the Newark Public Schools. A copy of the meeting notice was also forwarded to City Hall for posting. This is a regular board meeting for Tuesday night, September...
Meeting called to order.
Good evening. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 1046 at SEC, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising the Star Ledger on the level of Cokey, Haiti Progress, and Luz Americana newspapers, and by distribution to the administrative offices of the Newark Public Schools. A copy of the meeting notice was also forwarded to City Hall for posting. This is a regular board meeting for Tuesday night, September 26, 2017.
Please stand for the flag salute. Ready salute. Roll call please.
Board members, Mr. Butzo.
Present.
Ms. Carter.
Present.
Ms. Fonseca.
Yes.
Ms. Gaddy.
Present.
Ms. Garcia.
Present.
Ms. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. Owens.
Present.
Vice Chair Padilla.
Present.
Chair Lewis.
Present.
Quorum is present, everybody is present, Mr. Chair.
Now we'll have greetings from the principal of University High School, the Phoenix, home of the Phoenix, Mr. Mendez, alumni of Phoenix himself.
Thank you, thank you very much. Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Okay. Board members, Superintendent Serf, Deputy Superintendent Gregory, Business Administrator Wilson, Chief Academic Officer Hagerty, parents, students, staff members, and stakeholders, welcome to the University High School of Newark, New Jersey. Home of the Phoenix. University High School was originally created as a program called School Within a School. It was located at South Side High School, which is currently Malcolm X Shabazz. University became a standalone school in 1977 and was located on High Street. It was then moved to Clinton Place in 1983. Some notable alumni include Mayor Raz Baraka, R&B singer Faith Evans, professional basketball players Nadira McKinneth, Lauren Mincy, and Brittany Sykes. Author Niobe Bryant, motivational speakers, authors and doctors Dr. Remek Hunt, Dr. Sampson Davis, and Dr. George Jenkins, also known as The Three Doctors. I don't know how notable I am, but I am also a graduate of University High School. University High School was founded on the principles that still serve to drive our vision forward: responsibility for our students and their achievement, integrity in our values and goals, service to our community, excellence in our academic and social endeavors. We are proud to host the first regular board meeting of the 2017-2018 school year. To begin the evening, I would like to introduce Dr. Lopez. Dr. Lopez is a teacher at University High School, and she's also a practicing attorney. She will say a few words about our premier law academy. Thank you.
Thank you. This evening, I'd like to highlight one of our most prominent programs here at University High School. We are the home of the Third Good Marshall Law Academy. It is the only, it is the only high school within the district that houses a pre-law academy. Okay, on May 5, 2017, we hosted our Law Day here. It is an all-day event since we are a pre-law high school. We started off the event with giving all of our high school students shirts to commemorate Law Day. The Law Day theme was around the Fourteenth Amendment transforming American democracy. The theme is outlined there, but I will highlight a few important points. This transformative amendment advanced the rights of all Americans. It also played a pivotal role in extending the reach of the Bill of Rights to the states. The Fourteenth Amendment serves as the cornerstone of landmarked civil legislation, the foundation for numerous federal court decisions protecting fundamental rights, and a source of inspiration for all those who advocate for equal justice under the law. Here at University, we pride ourselves in having two law teachers who both possess jurist doctorate degrees. We both went to Rutgers Law School right here in Newark. I'm a graduate of the class of 1997. And we also have Dr. Erin Berman, who is also a JD, as I mentioned, and she is from the class of 2011. I teach constitutional law, civil law, and Essex County Paralegal Studies 101, where our kids get dual credit. And Erin teaches five sections of criminal law, so at present, we have about close to 200 students taking law. The first part of our program was the mock trial, and the name of the case was Robert Abrams versus Lincoln High School. Presiding over the trial was a real sitting judge, Judge Marvin Adames from the Newark Municipal Court. The mock trial took place right here in our school, in our state-of-the-art courtroom, and our students who performed the mock trial were all prepared by members of the Newark Youth Court and members, attorneys from Newark Municipal Court, both the prosecutor's office and the public defender's office. This is our prosecution team, so you can see the kids in action. Nothing speaks better than a picture. On the left side is our prosecution team. Our student Serenity Jones acted as the prosecution attorney, and on the left, Shakur Carmichael acted as the defense attorney. Both of them were coached. The attorneys came here to coach them on Law Day during the mock trial. We had Yanisha Warwick from the Newark Municipal Court. She's a prosecutor. And on the defense side, we had Sandra Burke, who is a public defender, coaching our kids during the trial. Next, our witnesses, we had Catherine Narango Jazzdale Rhett on the prosecution side, and on the defense side, we had Ryan Hemnerin, Azeem Baldwin, and they acted as witnesses. As you can see, that is our courtroom, that is our classroom here at University High School. And you can see Ryan sitting in the jury booth and the witnesses sitting on the prosecution table. Next, we had our jury who presided over the trial, and these are members also on the right of students who were watching the mock trial, and of course, they drew their own decisions, so they acted as jurors as well. Next, we had our panel discussion, and the topic was promoting active citizenship, how young people can become advocates of equal justice, lessons from accomplished attorneys who have been in your shoes. And for the most part, all of the attorneys who you see here went to law school with me at Rutgers Law School. And our panelists are Camelia Valdez, she is the sitting Passaic County Prosecutor, John Sharp James, Newark Southwood Councilman, Michael J. Plata, who is a partner with Archer and Greener, Linda McDonald Carter, who is the director of Essex County College Paralegal Studies, and the Honorable Judge Marvin Adames, and last but not least, Ahmad Rasool, who is the chief prosecutor with Newark Municipal Court. That was our panel. And we also fundraised to buy them shirts as well. Next, we had a luncheon that was sponsored by the Association of Black Women Lawyers, and during the luncheon, we moved to the library, and the kids were given an opportunity to network with the attorneys, and many of our students are well adept at networking already. Last but not least, we had PowerPoint presentations by our students. Those students who achieved the highest grade on substantive law projects in their respective law classes presented to their peers on Law Day. And for our civil law class, Chimazuru Okaga and Azeem Baldwin presented, and for the constitutional law segment, Ryan Hemnerin presented, and last but not least, for the Essex County Intro to Law for Paralegals and Kito 12th Grader presented. And that summarizes our Law Day activity here at University High School, and we are very proud to prepare these students and to expose them to these wonderful programs, and we hope that next year, you will join us as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lopez. Thank you, University, for hosting us. Well, it's on, but there we go. Thank you so much, University Principal. I don't know if you're still here, I can't see you. There you are in the back, thank you so much. We're very proud, very, very proud to be here, and proud of the work that you and your team are doing here, and I love your program. I am a reformed lawyer back in a former life, and I admire very much what you're doing. It's fantastic, thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Next order of business is recognitions. I would like to recognize on tonight, our food service department, and we have food service workers, can you please stand? All our food service workers. These are individuals who make sure that our children receive their meals each and every day, and they are the ones who are there to make sure that our children are fed, and sometimes, as we know in our city, some of our children, that's the only meal that they get. So we just want to say thank you to you, our food service workers who work so hard, but oftentimes is overlooked. Thank you, and we salute you on today. There are three individuals who will be retiring from our food service department, and we want to recognize them. First is Carla Robinson. Is she here? She's not here? Gail, you want to come get it for her? The next person is Carmen Delgado. Carmen Delgado. Next person is Roger May Newsom. Roger May Newsom. Let's give them a round of applause one more time. Now I would like to entertain a motion to amend the agenda.
Motion.
To add the read in the Personnel Committee minutes and Personnel voting items. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Carter. Garcia. It's a motion to add the, to amend the agenda to add the read in the Personnel Committee minutes and also Personnel voting items. Moved by Ms. Carter, second by Ms. Garcia, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Agenda's amended?
Ms. Carter, please read the minutes.
Good evening, everyone. We had an emergency Personnel Committee meeting yesterday. The meeting was convened at 5:02 PM. Those in attendance were myself, Board Member Gaddy, Board Member Padilla, and Board Member Garcia, NPS staff Larissa Schamber, Sarah Yon, Andrea Cavaness, Nafisa Hunter, Janelle Evans, and Ms. Valerie Wilson and Brad Hagerty. The board reviewed at length the job descriptions, resume, hiring manager recommendations, and salary offer for 10 central office hires. Six new hires and four promotions. Nine of the hires slash promotions were recommended by the full, by the full committee for approval by the board, pending additional information on two candidates. One candidate required clarification on whether they had a boiler license, and the other, the board requested an update scope of work for a PDAM project manager. One was a mixed vote with two board members voting yes and two voting no based on a salary recommendation.
Can I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss personnel?
Motion.
Second.
Was it Gaddy? Second Fonseca. It's a motion to enter into executive session for purposes of discussing personnel matters. Moved by Ms. Gaddy, second by Ms. Fonseca, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Thank you, we're moving into executive session. How long, Mr. Chair?
Twenty to thirty minutes.
Let's go, Dolly.
Can I get a motion?
Motion.
To reconvene from executive session?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Carter, second by Padilla. It's a motion to reconvene from executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carries, we're back in open session.
Can I get a motion to accept the Personnel Committee report?
Motion.
Second.
Garcia, second Fonseca. It's a motion to accept the Personnel Committee report as delivered by Ms. Carter, moved by Ms. Garcia, second by Ms. Fonseca. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? The Personnel Committee report is accepted. Personnel items, Mr. Chair.
Can I get a motion to vote on Personnel items?
Motion.
As a block, and we're going to pull Eddie Maldonado Jr. and Joyce Wall.
Move it.
Motion.
Second.
All right, who made it?
Kim Gaddy. And I'm second.
Gaddy, second Carter. It's a motion to vote on Personnel items as a block with the exception of Mr. Maldonado and Ms. Wall, moved by Ms. Gaddy, second by Ms. Carter, all in favor?
Aye.
I have a statement, sorry.
What's that, what's that? Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, we're going to vote on them as a block. Go ahead, Ms. Fonseca.
All right, so before we move to this, I just want to say in public what I said in private, and while I understand that this is a major transition for us voting on Personnel items, while I don't sit on the Personnel Committee, and I do respect what the committee votes on, the same way like I do things in my committee, but just being that this is a learning curve for some of us, I'm just asking that the information is relayed to us thoroughly when there are this many items or when there's disagreements by the committee, because it'll just help me make more of an effective vote opposed to just voting on something. So I'm just asking on the district's behalf, I don't think that it's a board member's responsibility that's on that committee, because all of us work, and sometimes these meetings are over like at 10, 11 o'clock at night, so I can't expect a board, one of my board colleagues to contact me, but it's the district's responsibility to relay that information to other board members when we have to publicly vote on something that we're not familiar with. So I just want to put that on the record, that going forward, because of this major transition and just trying to understand the dynamic that we're well informed, so moving forward, we can make proper, effective decisions and not just being thrown into this. I'm just asking that courtesy be given, specifically for myself, because I understand the importance of voting on items like this.
I understand, and we want to, we want to honor your request, but I just want to make sure I've understood it correctly, if I may. So when there is a regularly scheduled committee meeting, which is typically a week before the board meeting, the protocol is that the chairperson, I believe this is right, of that committee reports out to fellow board members. So, so I don't think, I'm hearing you change that, but when there's an emergent, well, we didn't call it, it's not emergent, when there's an off-cycle meeting such as the one that just happened today, your request, which we are pleased to honor, is that given the shortness of time and given, as you say, if people have other things to do, that the district circulate the material. Is that, is that?
Yes, I would appreciate it.
If that is consistent with the desire of the board, we are happy, we are happy to do that.
So it's my understanding, because of the sensitivity of this information, that will never happen in terms of circulating it via email, you're circulating.
For Personnel.
For Personnel, so it will always be, unfortunately, last night, I got out of the meeting after eight o'clock, it was a last-minute meeting, and we were voting on the items today. So it will always be that the Personnel Committee will go through each recommendation for a hire, we will discuss in great detail, we will come back to the board as a whole in executive, executive session to explain what our recommendations is and ask for questions. We can't circulate the information prior, because it has people's personal information, and that's why we collect it at the end. Okay, so I understand about not sending people's information out, like that's obvious. My concern is getting a five-minute, 10-minute discussion about a list of people for us to vote on at a meeting. Like, I just don't think that that's, that doesn't help me make an educated decision, is what I'm saying. So I don't know what method we can figure out, but I'm just asking that we get more information in a timely manner opposed to 10 minutes before. That's all I'm saying, so we have to figure out a better dynamic, that's all I'm requesting, very basic, so that we can be better prepared, because I understand the importance of this, but I also want us to be responsible if we're taking on this, this big responsibility as a whole.
Excuse me, Superintendent, good evening, board members, board chair, members of the community. Ms. Fonseca, we hear your concerns and agree that we are working through a process. We are transitioning to Personnel Matters, as you know. There's been a transition to central office staff and a transition eventually to schools, which will be a much larger volume. It is our intent to ensure that those things are included in the regular community, committee cycle, and we will then determine how that information will be circulated to protect people's personal information, but to ensure that board members are adequately informed to actually make an informed vote.
So we think, we think your request is entirely appropriate. Let us work offline and see if we can satisfy.
So on that, once we get on the schedule, and then we, it'll be on the schedule, I'll report out at the business meeting, and then we can then go into executive session at the business meeting to discuss what Personnel items that need to be voted on at the public meeting. Thank you, and I'm sorry, folks, I didn't even say good evening to everyone. Good evening.
All right, the current, we're going to be voting yes or no on the following candidates: Abdul Qadir as PDAM project manager, new hire, Adobe Nadupu as health coordinator, Alvarez as accounts payable specialist, Skaif as recruitment coordinator. Those are all new hires. The promotions the board will be voting on will be Mobley as coordinator, Rupa, strategic sourcing analyst, Smith, senior maintenance repair, Camacho, school operations assistant.
Correction, those are their current titles, we're voting for them to be promoted to the new titles.
Yeah, is the board okay with that? So the first three names I said were new hires, last four names were promotions. Everybody understand that? Okay.
Yep.
Motion?
Motion.
All right, Padilla, who's second? Gaddy? It's a motion for those three hires, three new hires, and four new promotions. Roll call, Mr. Butzo?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Fonseca?
Yes.
Ms. Gaddy?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Padilla?
Yes.
Chair Lewis?
Yes.
Motion carries. There's two remaining individuals, Mr. Maldonado as building manager and Ms. Wall as coordinator. Can I get a motion for Mr. Maldonado?
Motion.
Garcia?
Second.
Gaddy? It's a motion for the appointment of Mr. Maldonado as building manager. Roll call, Mr. Butzo?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Fonseca?
Yes.
Ms. Gaddy?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Padilla?
Yes.
And Chair Lewis?
Abstain.
Thank you. Motion carries. Remaining individual is Ms. Wall. Motion?
Motion.
Garcia?
Second.
Second Padilla. This is a motion to vote on Ms. Wall as coordinator. Roll call, Mr. Butzo?
Abstain.
Ms. Carter?
No.
Ms. Fonseca?
Yes.
Ms. Gaddy?
No.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
No.
Mr. Padilla?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
No.
I have four yeses, one, two, three, four noes, and abstention, motion does not carry.
I'm sorry, I changed my vote to a yes.
Okay, is everyone okay with Mr. Butzo changing his vote to yes?
Yes.
Okay, so I have one, two, three, four, five, I do have five yeses, motion carries. I have, let's go.
I have a question.
Yes.
You can't bring that up, you can't bring that up.
Okay, thank you. Approval of minutes?
Hold on, hold on.
Moving on, exactly, okay. Approval of minutes, move on. There's two sets of minutes currently, August 15th, August 22nd. Motion to take them together or separate?
Motion? Yeah, motion.
Let's, let's move on.
Go. Wait, Keith.
Move on.
Motion.
Okay, so is there a motion to take the minutes together?
Motion.
The second.
Your second, taking minutes together? Thank you. It's a motion to take the minutes together, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Take them together. It's a motion to actually vote on the August 15th minutes and the August 22nd meetings. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Garcia, second Padilla. All in favor to vote on those minutes?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Minutes passed. Student representative report?
We'll now have the student representative report.
Good evening, I'm Gina Metos, the student representative for the 2017-2018 school year, and I attend Eastside High School. As I have stated in prior meetings, it is my honor to serve on the board and represent the students of this great city. As part of the student representative responsibilities, I was challenged with creating year-long goals, and I am happy to announce I have already made progress on two of the three goals for the school year. Which for those of you who are unaware, my goals are to, one, the student representative role has not been used to its potential, and I intend to change that and be an accurate voice for the student body. Therefore, I am in the process of forming an alliance with, with the student cabinet from each high school in the city to bring real-life circumstances and concrete evidence to the board. Having a cabinet will help me have both ears and eyes in all schools. Secondly, being Secondly, being able to be reached via social media. And lastly, I plan to have fun in this position and grow to be more knowledgeable about the school system. So as for the progress I've made, my social media accounts are on both Instagram and Facebook and can be found with @NorkStudentRep. This is one of the fastest ways to contact me. These will be distributed to the schools in Newark by their counselors. I also now have access to the Student Representative email, which is studentrep@mps.k12 nj.us. Everyone can feel free to contact me via email as well. If anyone is interested in a flyer with my contact information, there are flyers at the table before entering the auditorium. I also have some additional copies if you would like to speak to me after the meeting. I think the fastest and most efficient way to form a cabinet is to have the President of the Student Government at each school be chosen. Google Forms have already been sent out to schools and their Student Government Presidents should be chosen by October. As a result, I plan to have the cabinet up and running by the beginning of November. In addition, I plan to attend the after-school sessions at the Student Center to recruit as well as attend and volunteer at the MPS Office of Student Supports and NJIT FASPA kickoff that will be held this Saturday at NJIT. I will become more knowledgeable about MPS by participating in meetings with Mr. Hagerty, Dr. Williams and Ms. Dearing. These meetings will provide me with accurate information so I can distribute it to my peers. I hope everyone's school year has been off to a successful start. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. We're now gonna move on.
What's your report?
To the Board Chair's report. Good evening, Superintendent, Principal Mendez, fellow Board Members, staff, parents, community members and students. Welcome to the September Meeting of the Board of Education. On September 13th, 2017, it was a historical day for our city, especially for our school district. That morning at about 12:45 a.m., the State Board of Education voted to return local control to the, back to the district, of the district, back to the Board of Education. This work was not easy. This work was not easy. And even though many wants to take credit for it, this was not the work of one single person. This was the work of a collective of individuals over the years who was dedicated to this school district. Can I now at this time ask every Board Member that ever served on this Board to please stand? Former President, uh, Marion Bay was here, but she had an emergency. But I want to say to these Board Members, we thank you for your service on this Board and your advocacy for local control to make this day happen. It would not have happened without you sitting at the table and making sure that our children were put first and that this district understood that Norcas come first. Thank you for your advocacy. As the President of this Board right now, I would like to invite you to sit at the table, to break bread and be a part of this process as we get back local control of our district. We understand together collectively the challenges that we had. We understand why they came to take our district back in 1995. And I'm counting on you to sit at the table with us nine Board Members and we keep, and we fight to keep our district. So we will never look back. Yes, we have it back, but we must keep it. And I'm thankful for your advocacy and I hope that you take this invitation to come sit at the table and to be a part of this process. Thank you. Over the years, we had one particular person who stood by each of us, whether you were on this Board then or you on this Board now. There was an individual who ate, slept and breathed Newark Public Schools. This individual dealt with board elections. This individual scheduled our meetings. This individual scheduled all our trainings, all our conferences, and she made sure that the Board got every complaint that came her way. So I would like to ask at this time for Ms. Martha Jones to please join me on the stage. After we leave here at night, we be in our beds sleep. Martha still be here preparing for our next meeting. So we just wanted to give you these flowers, say thank you for all you do for us.
They should've did a group picture with Ms. Martha. Where's Rob?
Any, any former Board Members out there? Can you get in this group picture? Former Board Members as well?
All right, cool.
Oh, Rambo.
Lastly, lastly, I would like to say to everyone that this time is not to be relaxed. It is not time to be divided. This is not the time for us to show hate. This is not the time for us to complain. But this is the time that we have all been waiting for, that we must not mess up. We must stay focused and make sure that every child that enter our buildings are safe and ready to receive a quality education to ensure that they are world-class scholars. This is the time that we must come together and understand that we are our brother's keeper, but we are also our sister's keepers too. This is the time that we must build together. We must be honest that everyone that's smiling our faces are not smiling for our success, but are plotting for our failure. We must make those individuals liars. We must make them losers. We must show them that Newark, we are tough as the bricks that laid, laid, that was laid to build our city. We are built for this Newark Public Schools. We are built for this Newark. We are built for everything that's laid before us. We are built to tackle every challenge, to overcome any obstacle. Together, we must move Newark Public Schools forward. Together, we are Newark. Thank you. Next is, next is our Board Resolution. Mr., Mr. Bletso.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I would like to, uh, thank the, my colleagues on the Board for supporting this important initiative. Uh, more than now than ever, it's important that we, uh, have this dialogue. This resolution itself supports LGBTQ students in this city. Uh, the city, the Newark Public Schools will take the direction for the entire state of New Jersey. So, um, me sponsoring and supporting this as a whole of things. Uh, a couple of years ago, uh, downtown Newark, a horrific death occurred with a young lady called Sekia Guns. And the work that I do outside of this Board reminds me every single day of how her life was lost in vain. And it's personal to me because I know every day the struggle students have, uh, trying to receive a quality education, specifically those members of that community. Um, so this resolution will go beyond, uh, review of, uh, gender-based activities. It will go on with supporting those families who have, uh, students who happen to be LGBTQ. Um, and a whole host of things. It deals with, deals with professional development for staff and things of that nature. So I asked my colleagues to support this, um, not only because I put forth the Board, but for those students who are often the voiceless and who will often go ignore it. So thank you.
Can I get a motion?
Motion. Good job Reggie.
Your second.
Can I have the motion?
Second.
Motion for the Board Resolution as read by Board Member Bletso, moved by Ms. Garcia, seconded by Vice Chair Padilla. Roll call, Mr. Bletso.
Yes.
Ms. Carter. Ms. Fontecca.
Yes.
Ms. Gaddy.
Yes.
Ms. Garcia.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Vice Chair Padilla.
Yes.
Chair Lewis.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Next, we'll have our Superintendent Report.
Marquise.
I'm sorry, Ms. Gaddy.
I just wanted to add that there was a resolution that was presented on Saturday. Linda Carter, um, aren't retired from the district and so we will have it to read into the record next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gaddy, I'm glad you said that. There also was a resolution given last yesterday for Rafael Gordon, International Motivational Speaker and Author and Alumni of Arts High School. The Board will also be reading that into the record next month, but yesterday at Arts High School was Rafael Gordon Day and he was able to motivate our students and also sign his book. So all the students that attended that program received three books and will be going to see his movie premiere tomorrow at Carnegie Hall.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much, uh, Mr. President, members of the Board and especially members of the community who are here tonight. Uh, it is a very, very, very proud day for, uh, for Newark. Uh, and, uh, I want to especially thank our educators, uh, our administrators, our academic team, many of whom are here tonight, uh, uh, because we're actually here to talk, uh, tonight about how the children of Newark are progressing in their mission to get a quality public education. And, um, we have good news to report and I will tell you that the report that we give today is very much connected to the extremely important, uh, celebration for the return to local control that, um, the Board President and others mentioned and applauded and appropriately celebrate. I think there are two basic themes here and I applaud the vision looking forward. As an old history teacher, there's nothing I can do about the past, nothing whatsoever, but there's a lot that all of us can do about the future. And looking forward, we have, um, a foundation to build on and to improve on and, and I really do believe this was key to the state's decision. This Board and this community are starting to show a real unity of purpose around our collective mission. And that is to make sure that every child gets a quality public education. And I will tell you that the, we can tolerate disagreements. We can tolerate civil respectful, um, arguments so long as collectively we all agree why we do this. And that is to make sure that regardless of the circumstances into which a child is born or lives, regardless of his or her parent's country of origin, regardless of the economic circumstances of his or her household, regardless of all else, they have just a good, a shot at realizing their full human potential, uh, as any other child on this earth, in this state, in this country. That is a sacred mission and sometimes we in the community, sometimes we up here on the dais, find ourselves in disagreement about small things. But I am so thrilled to report that as I've gotten to know this Board and as we hand responsibility over to this Board to preside over that mission, there is indeed unity of purpose and I applaud them for it and I think we should all applaud them for it. So let's talk, uh, a little bit about the results on the federally mandated high-stakes test, which is called, uh, The Park. So I'm gonna quickly turn to thi- to this page. We are, um, uh, going to talk at, in some detail about this. There's so many things we can talk about, we can squabble about, we could fight about, but this is what it is all about. And that is, are our children reading better? Are they doing mathematics better? Are they graduating at higher numbers? Are they going on to success? So the percentage of students, uh, Newark Public School students meeting or exceeding expectations across all grades increased for the second consecutive year. These gains were especially pronounced in ga- in grades three through eight, which means that we are building a very solid foundation for, uh, the future. The gains in high school were pretty much tracked, the gains in the state, they were less substantial, but the gains in three through eight dramatically outperformed, uh, the state, both on a one-year and a two-year basis. If you look at citywide results, which I would encourage us to do as the right lens, that includes all public schools. If you look at all across the Board, um, we show there's real progress in narrowing the gap with the rest of the state. Citywide gains of 12 percentage points. That is, that may sound like a small number, but that is in this world a massive increase over, over two years. Seven points in math, finally a breakthrough year in math. Congratulations to our math teachers, math instructors and Nick, who's probably not here, the head of our math, uh, uh, department. All right, math. We narrowed the gap, uh, with the state by five points and three points in reading and math respectively. Gaps for underserved, our most underserved students narrowed. And how do we compare with similar districts across the state? Uh, we outperformed the largest cities in other park states that have the data publicly available, particularly when you look at low-income students. And taken as a whole, I want you to take this in because- because six years ago, seven years ago, in 2010, Newark compared to the 37 districts that are most like it was barely out of the first quartile. Today, in both reading and math, we are in the 80th percentile in reading and mathematics. That is a growth, that is progress, that we should all be proud of. And they're even stronger, these results, when you look not at, how did the third grade do this year versus how did the third grade do last year? How'd the fourth grade do this year? But how'd the fourth grade do last year? But when you look at what we call the same cohort of children, that is, last year's third graders, how did they perform as this year's fourth graders? And they're even stronger when you look at the same children, not third grade, fourth grade, everybody, but the children who were in one of our third grades and in one of our fourth grades and both took, and both took the test. So we're very, very pleased with those results. So if you turn to the next page, please, and I won't run through the numbers, but if you look at it graphically, what you want to see is that arrow pointing up. And by the way, just so you understand this, that this is a very hard test. And the state average hovers at around 50%. This is not like, well, when I was in school, I had to get a 90 to get an A or better. So I do want to be absolutely clear that in any objective, absolute level, these results have not fully accomplished our central mission. But I will tell you that we have learned that growth is the metric that has the greatest meaning. And we are, all of our arrows are pointing up in the right direction. If you look at third through eighth grade on the left here, I think we got to change pages, please. If we turn to third through eighth on the next page, I'll tell you what. Who's running this? Is this, is Martha running this or who's? Val's running this. Okay, I will point to you, Val. I got, wow, you can do it all. Okay. If we look at, look at the growth in ELA, that's English Language Arts, look at the progress there, from 22% to 33%, from 19% to 26%. And again, in high school, we are not stuck in place. We are growing at about the same rate as the state. And we're going to go deeply into that because we want to talk about not only the good, but where we have a great deal of work up to do and try to unpack that a little bit. And our academic team will be talking about that in some length. So now what I want to show you is, and this gets really, I think, very, very interesting. When you look at the growth this year versus the state, that is, next page, please, that is the top-left chart. This is the two-year gains, over there, thank you, the two-year gains in English Language Arts. The blue being the state and NPS in the yellow, or green, or yellow-green, whatever that is. So you'll see that we are outpacing, we're narrowing the gap with the state. The same is true in math. And very interestingly, if you aggregate all of the schools, charters, traditional, magnets, you aggregate them all, you'll see pretty similar growth across the, across relative, relative to the state. And the same is true in high school, although in high school, you'll see that the state is growing at a faster rate than Newark Public Schools. Although, when I break that out into magnet schools and traditional schools and charter schools, you'll see some pretty interesting data on that. So let's look at high schools more deeply. So I apologize if you can't see it, but if you look at this graph, all of the left side is English Language Arts. The right side is mathematics, and we're focusing only on high school. So if you look at the state of New Jersey, all the way on the right of each graph, you'll see about 56% are meeting or exceeding expectations. But look right next to them, 30, at 58%, the, our magnet schools, and you know them all, we're actually sitting in one right now, where 36% of our high school students attend school are beating the state. They're beating the VOTEC schools, the county VOTEC schools, and they are beating substantially the charter schools. So this is not about a particular sector of schools. This is about having as many great schools as possible for families to choose from. So if you look over on the far left, right? And you look at what are called the NPS comprehensive schools, that is where we have the deepest work left in front of us and where this board has the deepest work left in front of us. And I believe that Chief Academic Officer Haggerty will provide some in-depth analysis of what's going on. But essentially, what is happening is that when you look at our high schools, a very significant percentage of our eighth graders do not become ninth graders in one of our comprehensive high schools. You know the comprehensive high schools, East Side, West Side, Central, Malcolm X Shabazz, and who did I leave out? Berenger, Berenger, excuse me, and Berenger, and Berenger High School. So that is, again, in mathematics, you see that the magnets are basically tying the state and exceeding both the charters and the VOTEC. Now, if we look at all Newark schools, and again, this is my frame of reference. I know that there are those who have a deep disagreement with this. But if my frame of reference is, if you look at all Newark, the middle column, left is reading, right is math, you see that, again, the arrow is pointed up, up, up in third through eighth grade. And I'm going to flip the page again. And if I could flip the page, Val? Thank you. What this graph demonstrates is, and again, this is just two years of data, all right? This is like, the PARC test has only been administered for that brief period of time. So three times, but two growth measures. You'll see that in 1415, there was a 20% gap, 20 percentile point gap between the state and Newark schools. Now, it's a 15 percentile point gap. In two years, a five-point narrowing is a positive thing, slightly smaller, but still a meaningful narrowing in mathematics as well. Now, let's look at, let's look at this chart. Again, looking citywide, this is, if you look in the year 2011, so this looks at a longer period of time. Where did Newark stack up compared to every other major district, every other demographically comparable district, 37 of them by the state's measures? We were sort of hovering down in the 44th, 42nd percentile of them, meaning we were in the bottom half of the state. Now, look at the right-hand column. This year, we are in the 83rd percentile in math and the 81st in reading. Again, that is substantial progress over three years. We have particularly notable gap narrowing for our African-American students. And if you look on the next page, please, you'll see that if our data systems, which are new and pretty slick, I have to say, allows us to cut and slice the data to look at it. If you look at it through African-American students, you've seen a narrowing of the gap also in ELA and also in math. And just before I left the office, I looked at the data, which Mr. Martin has prepared, there he is, sitting over there, looking at Latino students. And I think I'm right in saying there's essentially an equivalent narrowing for our Latino students as well. And maybe the most interesting graph of all is the next one, please, Val, is these gains, when I aggregate all the schools in the city, are not at the expense of students attending one sector or the other. Basically, you see all boats rising. You see on the top, all of, you see all of New Jersey. You see the green is all pure NPS schools. And you see the light green, if you can see that, is an aggregation, a weighted average, taking into account the number of students in the NPS schools and district schools. And you see that the rise in charter schools is not coming at the expense of the rise of NPS and vice versa. And you also see the gap narrowing in both, in both areas. How do we compare to other urban districts? So there are, I think, seven or eight states in the District of Columbia that take the PARC test. Not everybody has reported already, but we have been very honest about this. For every district or state that has reported, we have seen how we stack up against them. And the code here is blue is Newark Public Schools. That's pure Newark Public Schools. The light green is the DC Public Schools. The green is Baltimore. And the orange, I guess, is Albuquerque. These are all states that do, that do the PARC exam. And you'll see that Newark compares quite favorably with everybody, except it's more or less tied in ELA and a little behind in math, the District of Columbia. However, but if you look, I don't know, I lived in DC for a number of years. If you actually disaggregate the data and look at Newark versus the same, what's called a free and reduced-price lunch population, you carve out big parts of DC that are not free and reduced-price lunch, you'll see that we are doing substantially better than even DC. And if you look at it on a state level, I find this incredibly interesting, that the Newark Public Schools are looking at our, and you compare it with DC, with New Mexico, with all of Illinois, all of Colorado, and all of Maryland, these are public data. Newark is right in the top of the pack. Newark, the city of Newark, is right in the top of the pack compared to these entire other states. And only a little bit behind the leading states in mathematics, 28 points versus 33 points. So it's important, again, to make clear that, first of all, there's a lot of things that matter in life besides test performance. And I want to be very, very clear about that. We've been to, so we've had some spectacular events recently. I was at, I saw some students, actually, this Saturday night at an event in arts, in music, in drama. We have a lot of measures that have, are not captured by a high-stakes test in reading and math. But here's what we know. Here is what we know, and there's no debating this in the research. If a student has not achieved at least a minimum level of proficiency in reading and mathematics by the time he or she graduates from high school, it is very, very unlikely that he or she will be able to progress to the next phase of life. That's a, that is a figure that I think is beyond debate. So getting it right in reading and math as measured by a test that is aligned to college preparedness, getting everybody through high school ready to take college-level courses or move to a certificated degree is central to the mission, not the whole mission, it is central to the mission. And so congratulations to our educators and team who have helped bring that. And congratulations to the students. And congratulations to this board for their leadership in bringing this about. Mr., yes, big hand for them. And Mr. Haggerty, Chief Academic Officer Haggerty, is going to provide some additional information and will be, thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, members of the community. It's with great pleasure that I take advantage of the next couple of minutes to share some in-depth results from our 1617 PARC data. And the headline from the superintendent's remarks is clear. And that is that over the past two years, we have seen steady, sustained progress across both English Language Arts and mathematics achievement within Newark Public Schools. So what I'm going to help us walk through is we're going to look at those overall headlines deeper in three ways. The first way is it's very important for us to understand how students do by grade level. Grade level tells us the number and percentage of students who are meeting those grade-level standards. And so we should ask ourselves, are we doing better at meeting each grade's grade-level standards? And as this first bullet point shows, I'm happy to report that, yes, there is improvement across nearly every grade level in both English Language Arts and Mathematics from last year to, from 1516 to 1617. And there is even more grade-level improvement when we look back to 1415 compared to 1617. Secondly, it's also important to look at the same group of students as they progress grade to grade through our schools. That is often referred to as following a students in a cohort. And again, it's equally important to know, as those students stay with us year after year, are they continuing to grow? And I am happy to report that, yes, improvements are even stronger for students who have attended NPS consistently over the last three years. Thirdly, it's important to look at school level change. As we know, districts have an impact, but the real unit of change in any district is what happens at each individual school. And so when we look at schools as the unit of change, I'm happy to report that the vast majority of our schools are improving, meaning they are seeing growth from 1516 to 1617 in English Language Arts literacy, and they are seeing growth in mathematics again over that year. And lastly, I'll close with a comment around participation. All of the data that I share with you has less meaning if many of our students aren't actually taking the assessment. But again, I am happy to report that the number of students taking the assessment has gone up each year over the past three years and now is nearly 95%, which tells us that we can now draw meaningful conclusions about this data for the district as a whole because so many students are participating. So what you see in front of you, and I'll attempt to use the, this pointer as well, is this is telling us grade-level improvement over the past year and past two years. So what you really want to see is this line here, this horizontal line here. You don't want to be below that line. If you're below that line, that means we're going in a negative direction. We want to see bars that are positive, going up, like this. And as you can see, in eight out of nine grades, that darker shade of blue went up this past year. And if you then look to the lighter shade color to the right of the dark blue, you'll see that over two years, it's gone up even more in every single grade level. So that means more students in each grade level are meeting the standards with each successive year. Now, observant folks are going to notice, all right, we've got one grade over here where we didn't go up. That happened to be English Language Arts in 11th grade. I want you to remember that grade and that particular subject area, English Language Arts in grade 11, because we're going to talk about it shortly. Let's turn to mathematics. This is the same data, but now in mathematics. So the same rules hold true. You want to see numbers above that line. And ideally, the higher the bar, the greater the growth. Similar to English Language Arts, we've seen growth this past year in eight out of nine grades in mathematics. And over two years, those numbers, if we look at this as an example, Math 3, where 7% was our growth last year, if you look at it over two years, that growth is double digits, 13%. And you can see each of the grades across. The one grade where we did go down this past year, or the one course, was Algebra 1. But you'll notice that if we look at Algebra 1 over two years, we still show a positive growth, meaning we had a big jump a year ago and a slight and a dip this past year, but it still nets positive growth overall. So again, grade-level achievement, great gains being made. Secondly, the second lens we're going to look at are cohorts. By cohort, again, we mean this is when we track the same students over multiple grades. So for example, these are students who, three full school years ago, may have been third graders. Two years ago, were fourth graders. Last year, were fifth graders. We want to see how did they do in each successive year and see if they are, in fact, growing or regressing over time. So let's take an example. So let's take an example. What you see here is a graph representing the performance of students in that cohort that were, whoops, sorry, that were third graders in 1415. This tells us that in 1415, only 17% of those third graders met or exceeded the standards in English Language Arts. We then looked at the students who took that assessment the following year as fourth graders. And look what happens. It jumps to 29%. So that group of students improved 12 percentage points in one year. Now let's look at how they did this past year in 1617 as fifth graders. And you will see that they jumped again, another more than 10 points to 40% overall as a group. So over a two-year period, that group of students grew over 20 percentage points, 23 percentage points, to be specific. And now, and that's particularly important, given what you'll see in a moment, which is when you look at other cohorts. I'd like to highlight just one point, which the superintendent started his report by, and the chair started this evening with commendations around the official return to local control. 23 years ago, when the state issued that report taking Newark Public Schools under state control, one of the conclusions they made in that report was this statement here that said that evidence shows that the longer children remain in the Newark Public Schools, the less likely they are to succeed academically. And that was one among a number of points that led the state to conclude that state control was, was necessary. What this data tonight shows, and what of course the chair and the superintendent have shared, is academic data showing that we are not just ready, but poised to turn that statement around, because we are fundamentally 180 degrees in a different direction. We are rising, we are improving with every year, and data like this demonstrates that. This chart shows very quickly cohorts of students in both English Language Arts on the left and Mathematics on the right. What you want to see are graphs that look like a staircase. Each year, each step, you go up, and each year you get a little bit or a lot better. And as you can see across all of these, this is third, fourth and fifth graders, fourth, fifth and sixth graders, fifth, sixth and seventh graders, and sixth, seventh and eighth graders. You see that same staircase formation each year in each cohort of students within English Language Arts. The trend holds for Mathematics, albeit it's not as pronounced, and the gains are slightly smaller in some of the, in some of the cohorts, but the same staircase moving up each year is evident. I want to highlight one thing, and there's a couple of things that, again, I hope, I hope we leave tonight really knowing and being able to share with the broader community, because I think it's a real point of pride and accomplishment. Let's look at this group right here. These are our third graders, sorry, these are our last year's fifth graders. And it shows us how they did two years, three years ago, two years ago, and one year ago. They are now sitting in sixth grade classrooms. I would like you to imagine that bar in a year where it might be up here, and then in another year where it might be up here, and in another year where it might be up here. If we were to continue at this rate of growth, we would see an eighth grade class in three years where 70 to 75% of students are meeting or exceeding standards. That is the path we're on, and that is the path we need to make sure continues. Data, of course, no one data point can tell a full story. And so what we want to tell here is that you've got to look at data points combined and in conjunction with one another. And so what I want to share with you here is there's an analysis you can do for every cohort of students and every grade level of students. But if you'll recall, a couple of slides back, I asked you to remember the one grade level where we went down two years in a row. That was English Language Arts, grade 11. So let's take another look at that cohort of students, English Language Arts, 11th graders, and see what's happened. So as we know from the, an earlier slide, whoops, as we know from earlier slide, performance has gone down a little bit, right? That's where we see this downward pointing arrow. And yes, that would be bad news. We do not want any grade level to go down. But now let's look at something different. Let's look at the actual students who were in that 11th grade group last year in this 21617 school year. And if we look at that group as ninth graders, 10th graders and 11th graders, we now see, which is represented by this yellow bar, that if we look at just the students who were with us all three years, and where they started three years ago compared to where they ended last year, you will see in this bar chart that three years ago, they scored at 26%, two years ago at 31%, and last year at 37%. So while they did not do as well as the previous 11th grade, that group as well is showing double-digit growth over a three-year period. The third lens with which we want to look at student achievement in more depth is by the school level. And as we know, schools are the unit of change. When a school is on the move, then districts are on the move. And so what you're going to see over the next couple of slides is school level performance in English Language Arts and then in Mathematics. If you're in the back of the room and can't read these, don't worry, I cannot either. But let me tell you what they represent. Each dot up there represents a school. All right, it represents a school and a school's achievement on two important indicators. If you want to know how a school is doing, you want to ask two questions. Question number one, how are we doing overall? That's this, what in math is referred to as the X-axis, right? That tells us how many students are meeting or exceeding the standards. So you want more schools on this part of the graph. The other thing we want to know is are they growing? Are they improving from one year to the next? That is what this axis, known as the Y-axis, tells us. And so now let's take a sharper look. The two lines that were just superimposed show a horizontal line at 0%. What that basically tells us is anybody above that line demonstrated growth, positive growth. Anyone below that line, negative growth. We also superimposed a line here that shows proficiency levels. Now we could have picked a lot of different lines here. We could have picked 50%. We could have picked the state average. We could have picked the district average. What we ended up picking was the average for other school districts, also in that district factor Group A or similar socioeconomic groups. And it divides it into four quadrants, shown here. You really want to be in this top quadrant, because that's showing not only did you have high levels of students passing the exam, but you also had high levels of growth. Another good place to be is in this quadrant, which shows that while you're below this line and not performing overall as high as we may want, you are demonstrating growth. And again, I want to shout out some of the schools whose names you might not be able to see up there because the names are so small, but those include schools like Camden Elementary, George Washington Carver, Spencer, Avon, Sussex, Cleveland, Speedway, Elliott. Yeah, that's worthy of applause. I think those schools deserve a round of applause. In this quadrant are a number of our high achieving schools, again, that achieve high levels of proficiency as well as high growth. Those are schools like Science Park High School, Technology High School, Anne Street, First Avenue, Park Elementary, Oliver, Abington, et cetera. Again, worthy of great praise and applause for the work those schools have done. Now obviously, the quadrant we want to not be in, right, is this quadrant here, meaning that we have, did not see positive growth and did not see overall achievement at the levels that we would desire. At the back of your packet, all of the data for every single school is listed. So if you have any question as to which dot is which school, you can literally find the data in the back of that packet and identify the dot that it corresponds to for English Language Arts. Let's turn to Mathematics. Same, same data or same construct. Now let's look at math performance. Again, now that you're familiar with the quadrants, if we put in the lines, we see that again, we have a sizable number of schools in that upper right quadrant, a very promising group of schools in the high-growth quadrant. Again, to call out some of those schools by name in that upper, upper left-hand quadrant, those are folks like Tubman, Sussex, Franklin, Hawthorne, Spencer, Camden, Peschine, and others. And again, what we want to make sure our focus is on is that the number of schools in this quadrant continues to get smaller and smaller with each passing year. I haven't said much about this quadrant over here for two reasons. One reason is there aren't many schools in that quadrant. Second is that what that shows are schools that have relatively high levels of performance, but they went backwards last year. Their overall growth was negative. But again, because the number is so small, I didn't spend too much time speaking on that. So when we look at school performance overall and look at the sheer number of schools above those lines, that is a lot to get excited about. Lastly, I'll end with participation. All of the data just shared has less meaning if these numbers are low. But they're not low, they are growing. In the first year when PARC was administered, when honestly there was a lot of public conversation about the test, some fears about it, how it was going to be used, et cetera, we were at 77%. As you can see, the participation is up, opt-outs and students not taking the test are down. And now this past May, we had 94% of our students participate, which allows us then to say in all those earlier slides that this data is truly representative of the district as a whole. So again, at the back of your packet is school level information should you have specific questions or interest in a particular school. Where I'll now turn is to Deputy Superintendent Gregory, who will share with you all, what do we do with this data? If it simply is a board presentation and then collects dust for the rest of the year, it has not served its purpose and we've missed out on a valuable opportunity. He's here to share that we have not missed out on that opportunity and will share with you how we've used that data this first two months of the school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Academic Officer Hagerty, and good evening, community and board members. So we have been able to dispel the myth that the longer students stay in the Newark Public Schools, the less growth they experience. Our data tells the opposite story, but also shows us how far we have to go and why we have to grow. Behind these numbers are human beings, children and their teachers, and we have to understand the causal relationship, albeit dense, between adult actions and student outcomes. In understanding that relationship, we have to, as a community of learners, embrace a willingness to be disturbed and use that to fuel our actions and next steps. So upon their return, all school leaders in the Newark Public Schools on August 3rd experienced a deep data dive similar to what you experienced this evening, but it was actually six hours long. And we looked at three years' worth of PARC data, which is directly aligned to college and career readiness in 21st century America. We gave each principal three years' worth of their data by school, but more importantly, by student and by teacher where applicable. With that data, we asked them to complete six data analysis tasks, which acted as a filter or funnel. We started very high, asking them to look at their overall performance trends in ELA and math, then their grade level trends, and most importantly, as my colleague Chief Academic Officer Hagerty highlighted, cohort performance trends and student performance level changes. Then we asked each principal to make a claim and use their data as evidence to support it. From there, my colleagues in the academics team, along with our talent team, in collaboration with TNTP, created what we called a Common Core Classroom Planning Tool. With this tool, we supplied principals with teacher performance data that included their ratings, their SGP's, their absences, and also gave school leaders the opportunity to update with qualitative data so that they knew the impact each teacher had on student outcomes. This data allowed principals to identify what teachers in their building were getting greater results with students, what teachers were showing promise but needed support, and then those teachers who were least effective in getting results. In identifying the teachers who are getting incredible results, principals strategically scheduled them for foundation-level courses like Algebra 1 and English 1, or third grade, ELA, or math. They ensured that our best teachers were standing in front of our students with the greatest needs and promise. And they also ensured that our best teachers were influencing their colleagues through peer coaching experiences and leading professional learning communities by content areas. Principals then looked at where the bulk of our teachers fall in the district, and that is teachers who are showing a lot of promise but need to be developed. And we came up with individual stands, individual plans to influence their pedagogical practices. As a nation, when we adopted the Common Core, it included massive pedagogical shifts and a new way of thinking about teaching and learning. What we don't want to do is not support people in making those shifts, because if they don't make those shifts, our students may not be as prepared for the jobs that will be readily available here in the city of Newark and other places alike in the United States of America. Our core classroom planning documents also allowed us to district-wide make strategic decisions about talent development. Is the professional development we are giving our teachers, our school leaders, et cetera, working? And then what kind of systemic changes can we do to respond to our realities? All of my colleagues, assistant superintendents, and myself went out to schools and we met with principals on two occasions, helping them come up with better plans to influence their data. We helped them identify systems and ways to ensure that they are working on a quarterly basis to respond to what we are seeing, making adjustments when necessary. So I would like to commend our data team, and I would also like to commend my colleagues in the Office of Academics and highlight three of my immediate colleagues, Assistant Superintendent Glover, please stand up, sir, Assistant Superintendent Mendez, please stand up, man, and Assistant Superintendent Duke Jackson. In the Office of Academics, along with our data team, we were poised and adamant about responding to Superintendent Serf's charge. And Chris charged us to not admire the data, but to actually do something about it. but to actually do something about it to improve the lives of students in Newark. We can't do this work alone. And as a result, all families will be receiving additional information about their children. If I could direct your attention to the screen above, it's important to know that if your child is in 3rd through 11th grade and they took the Park Assessment, you will be receiving an individual student report to see how they performed in both Math and ELA. On that report, there are some very helpful hints on how to use it. It shows you how your child compares to peers of theirs around the state and in other Park states. And then it shows you how your child performed on each particular cluster of standards. Moreover, in the upcoming months, we're going to make sure this data is available on our district website. We're also going to have family-friendly school summaries in our enrollment guidebook. Then we are going to also produce detailed school summaries. If, in fact, you want to jump ahead of this, these reports are available right now on the state's website, uh, detailing how individual schools perform. So I close with, there's a lot of information in your appendix about each individual school's performance. We need to come together as a community of learners and realize a better tomorrow starts with us today. Thank you.
Thank you, team. Thank you very much, Robert. Appreciate it. And with that, thank you for your patience. That was a lot of information, but it is really the heart of the matter. So thank you so much. Mr. President?
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Owens?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, I just wanted to make a, a quick comment because I, just like you, I'm sure I want to get to public participation. But as Chair of the Program Instruction Committee, um, I just wanted to reiterate Deputy Superintendent Gregory's point about, right? We have this data, we have to keep looking at it in terms of what we're going to do in order to improve the academic achievement of our students. And also just reiterate a point that the superintendent, that Superintendent Surf made, that Park scores are not everything and that we have very successful students in our district in all different, uh, ways and fashions. And in the Program Instruction Committee, we will continue to have conversations about how we improve academic achievement. So I didn't want to go without anybody on the board saying anything in response to the presentation. I know we want to get to public participation, uh, so thank you.
Any other board members? Next. Next order of business is public participation?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the public participation portion of the meeting. As a reminder, time limits for all speakers are enforced. There is no sharing or granting of speaking time to others. Speakers must be present when their name is called. Speakers are required to give their names and addresses. The public participation portion of the meeting is limited to one hour and 30 minutes. Examples of unacceptable behavior that are not permitted include, but are not limited to, naming district employees and engaging in personal attacks, slurs, excessive loudness, calling out, yelling, generally disruptive behavior, attempting to disrupt the meetings or inciting others to do so. Public participation at these meetings is intended to allow individual members of the public the opportunity to address the board and the administration on issues of public concern, not as a forum for two-way dialogue with the board members or district officials. The superintendent or designee or Mr. Chair may respond to questions either at the end of the session or responses may be provided at a later time. The superintendent or chair may interrupt any speaker or terminate any speaking privilege if the comments are disruptive or obscene. An individual may be cautioned that a personally-directed statement may be slanderous or defaming and the individual may be liable for his or her statements. Attempts to hijack or filibuster the proceedings, repeated interrupting or badgering the board chair or district officials, repetitive and truculent speech, or other disregarded rules of decorum will not be tolerated and may subject the individual to removal from the meeting. If necessary, the meeting may be adjourned.
First speaker, Lorenzo Hall. Martha, Martha. Tell him to fix this mic.
I just wanted to say that word, "penodoto." I never heard that before. My name is Lorenzo Hall. I'm the president of Local 617. And I represent the per diem security guards and custodial workers amongst others. Today, I'm talking about the per diem workers. There are 550 per diem workers filling non-instructional positions. These are custodial worker, security guard, and then food service, food service workers, per diem. Some of these folks have been around between three and 10 years, and 10 years, and maybe 23 years. Yes. These per diems receive no sick time, but yet they perform a job that a permanent person performs with sick time. Per diems can be fired without progressive discipline. In other words, I would say something different, but I know there's some children in here. They can be told by a supervisor to leave and not come back without discipline, without a conversation, without anything. And that's wrong. Local 617 and Local 3, SEIU both support paid sick time for these per diem folks. Why? In the city of Newark, with at least 10 employees, they are required by law to give sick time. And these per diem folks, they work hard. They work in the snow with everyone else. And if they don't show up, like I said, they don't get paid. Holidays come up, they don't get paid. But they're expected to work like hell. Thought I'd throw that in there. Almost 70% of these folks have been around three years or more. And it's just not fair that they not receive sick time, acknowledgement that they're human beings. In, and I'm gonna say on that point, not so much in security, but in facilities, they're treated very badly. That's the term I'm gonna use in front of children. That needs to stop. These are grown people. They need to be talked to as grown people, not children. To get respect, you give respect. And in a smaller setting with the district, I'll go into this more in depth. Thank you very much. I knew that was coming.
Next, next speaker, Ms. Gal Mohammed.
Good afternoon, Gal Mohammed, 120 French Street, Newark, New Jersey, president of Local 3. First, I would like to thank you guys for recognizing the food service workers tonight. For so long, we have been always under the radar. No one noticed us, so thank you again. As I take my journey through the schools during the day, from September the 5th until September the 26th as of this day, I have walked into the cafeteria where we have no workers, where we should have a full staff, we don't. We may have three workers. It may be a cook, it may be a food service worker, and it may be a cashier. We are short of staff. I have been in several schools and it's been going on. I went to Weekway yesterday where a worker was moved from Weekway to the next school where she fed over 300 work, 300 students with one worker. Things have to change. We also, we don't have enough subs. And why we don't have enough per diem workers is because they're being disrespected by the people that they have to come in contact with every day. And I'm not talking about their coworkers. If they call downtown for assignment, they are being disrespected. If they walk in the cafeteria besides their coworker, they are told, "If you stay home today, you will not work no more. You will go to the bottom of the list or you're out." These things are really happening. Yes, I do, I do send emails and I do have a relationship with some of the people in the food service department. And yes, I do believe that they do confront these managers, but it's not, it's not working. It is not working. We are not going to be disrespected. We want to come to work and we want to do our job. We want to feed our students. Because let me tell you, in the morning, the first three people, the kids see is a food service worker, a custodial worker, and the security guard. We are the foundation of the schools. They're the people they see the first thing in the morning every day. When you walk down the street, these kids may not know your name, but they know you fed them. They'll say, "Hey, are you still the food service worker lady?" They still know us. So please, we asking for respect. We want more staff. When we fight, we win.
Next, next speaker, Darren Martin.
Good evening, all. Darren Martin, 107 Ivy Street. Um, I always like when they come up with these fancy numbers for Park. What they failed to tell you with those graphs, um, is that Park started in about 20-something states and only three or four states have it left. So it's not like Newark going against a whole army of people of Christopher Surf. So let's be real about that. Um, second, um, Park testing is not why the scores are up. That's the great educators that's in Newark. It's the parents and all the administrators, anybody working together. That's why the scores are up. It has nothing to do with that Park test. That Park is crap. So local control. So let's talk about that a little bit. Um, I saw Christopher Surf, um, I saw Senator Ruiz, um, um, that, uh, young lady, Penn Torres, who'd be on this board, making some victory rounds as if they, like they did something to get local control back. So I just want to remind everybody that Christopher Surf had an opportunity to give local control back many years ago and didn't do it. So don't let him come and, uh, talk real slick. He's such a lawyer. Don't let him talk slick to you. I, I don't fall for it. Don't fall for it. And Senator Ruiz had plenty of chances to bring things out of committee in Trenton, and she didn't do it. She hurt Newark students. So while they try, trying to take a victory lap, I'm not falling for that. Next. Let's talk about the people who really made this happen. The Newark Students Union, with their sit-ins, their protests, their rallies. New Jersey Communities United, with their organizing and their great signs, with Delia for Kami Anderson and the Sherry one for Chris Surf and everybody else as well, as well. I mean, their signs were great. Then, here's where the rubber met the road. Pulse, which I'm glad to be a advisory board member for, Parents Unified for Local School Education, filed a, um, Office of Civil Rights Title VI complaint against this school, the school district. And they admitted that one Newark was racist and it was hurtful, and they admitted they're wrong. And they don't talk about that much. I know they like to, they like to just brush over that. But that, that, those charges were filed and they accepted responsibility for hurting kids in this district. That one Newark plan should be gone. Now, let's also talk about, um, let's go to our friends at Two Seater Street, or, well, now it's not Two Seater Street now. So I keep hearing this talk about who's going to be the new superintendent. Unless you guys are ready to get rid of some of those permanent places, people that have been at, in this district for a long time, you're not really serious about local control here. You need some, you gotta get rid of some of that, that permanent furniture of people you have down there that has resided, presided over all of this mess, all of this time. They come to the microphone, they talk slick. I know you guys like a lot of them. You say, "I want this one to be superintendent." You need a real superintendent. Janie was horrible. He had no track record of doing anything in Washington. He brought him here. Kami was inexperienced. She got brought here. I don't know who, what committee brought, I mean, I guess she was appointed, so they brought her here. The bottom line is, we have to get serious about local control and this board has to really get serious about bringing somebody in that's really gonna turn this, it has to be a whole makeover of this school district.
Next speaker. That's better. Thomas Lula.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Lula. I live at 243 Halsey Street. Uh, this is the eighth year that I've been teaching here. And the first thing I do want to say is congratulations to every board member up there, every board member past and present and future, and all the community members here who have made local control possible. I think there is something beautiful about a city being able to determine the destiny for the babies of which it teach and not people far, far away in Trenton. So congratulations. But in that congrats, I echo the, the sentiments of our board president in that we, this is not the time to relax. Right? And, and in fact, we have a long way to go. And I think that being the teacher that I am, I, I, I'm coming with, with pointing out the headache, but also bringing the aspirin. Um, and it, and it first deals with local control. Each of you, each and every single one of you, each of us here have a dual purpose now. We have to not only safeguard the newly-formed legitimacy that we now have, but we also have to establish that legitimacy at the same time. And what I will say is that we are not quite there yet. But there are two things that I would recommend starting now that can help us move on our way. The first is to clean up your rhetoric when we are discussing matters of importance. And what I mean by that is first and foremost, the language that you use to talk about children. In the last few meetings, you talk about those children, these children, those charter kids, those magnet kids, those whatever kids. All of these kids are our kids. I don't care what school they go to and neither should you, and we have to clean that up. You are the agents of progress and not the agents of division. So you have to ensure that your rhetoric can completely reflect that and move forward with that idea in mind. The second is about, um, prioritizing. Yes, I understand a lease is very important, but there are things phenomenally more important than a lease, like kids being shot at at schools, kids having no textbooks or outdated textbooks, textbooks, I mean, families being moved around the city because of problems in local romance, disrespect happening to the foundation of our schools. There are things that are phenomenally more important that I do not feel that this body is prioritizing. As it has been said by people in this community far greater than I, there are so many people who want us to fail as a city. And until we step up our game, we give them every reason to believe that we will. So my push to you is prioritize what you're, what is important. You are no longer an advisory board. So do not advise, act. But act on what is important and what will move the needle forward for all of the kids in Newark. And very, very quickly on George Washington Carver, um, if this is about the contract that Ms. Val has talked about at the, uh, the business meeting, um, and that was beautiful, by the way, um, that, that is something that I believe is an easy decision. But for the critics, I, I side with them. None of us have really seen what we're voting on tonight. None of us know what is going into the details of this lease, and I think that is an issue. That again chips away at the legitimacy that we now have a city because it's not what we need. Have a great night and thank you.
Next speaker, Denise Cole.
Um, tonight, I want to remind Marquis on the record, and this is for the record, that I'm telling you now, Tate and every board member, do not call my name if you don't call others' name for the same reason, for doing the same things. You are here now noted. If you do it, I will file the necessary charges. Now you've been fairly worn. Now tonight, I come to speak of, I'm speaking out to correct, I corrected the record. It is up to this board to do its due diligence and demand the superintendent follow all laws, policies, and procedures of Title 18 education policy, the New Jersey Constitution, the Constitution of the United States, Brown versus Board of Education, the New Jersey Plan, the New Jersey ESA Plan approved for New Jersey, that he sends you email communication in real time about decisions related to traditional public schools. Because we all know that you all didn't even know about the negotiation of the lease. But you sit there and you play kumbaya.
But you sit there and you play kumbaya. Now, tonight I want to warn you. If three of your board members vote on this lease tonight, I'm filing the necessary charges. Now you can take it or you can leave it, but you better start following Title 18 and conflict of interest in the Uniform Code because it exists for a reason. Arson, no. We had a conversation. I didn't hear him once tonight give that legal opinion about their conflict and interest. Second, I want you to know that the possibilities of George Washington Carver is that tonight, the education community of traditional public schools made up of parents, students, teachers, community are here asking you to vote this lease down in its present state as, in its present state or remove it from the agenda to be voted on at another time. Because the vote that you're going to take tonight and the voices you're going to hear from the critics from charter are going to be convoluted along with superintendent's convoluted version. It is going to be convoluted. It is not representative of traditional public school. Mr. Thomas, the new invigorating principal, brought a holistic education approach to approach attending to all of the needs of the teachers, parents, students, staff through developing a clear vision and mission for everyone with the focus on the student's needs, growth, development, attendance, and how a student learn while developing resources that will address the student's living and wellbeing.
Thank you, Ms. Cole.
Tonight.
Next speaker, Yolanda Green.
We need you to vote it down or remove it from the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Cole.
Everybody, we're looking at you. Think about it. Look at who's here tonight.
Your time is up, Ms. Cole.
Look who you represent. I want to hear you are all-city board. You're not a all-city board.
Nada Perry.
You are Newark Public School Board. And you are here to vote for Newark Public School and the growth of Newark Public School children.
Thank you, Ms. Cole.
You welcome.
Your time is up.
No, my time is up now because I'm finished.
Thank you, Ms. Witcher.
All right, Kathleen Witcher. I represent the South Side Malcolm X Shabazz Alumni Association, A.D. Johnson Avenue. I'm going to just list several points. I don't have time to describe, but I will in detail send something to the board members. Earlier, I did send and did share six points from a board member in Patterson concerning the return to local control and what board members need to use as their duty and responsibility guideline. Number one, I looked at the agendas for the last three months and I saw a number of people who were leaving the district. So I think the district needs to work on retention of teachers. There are, I see some new hires for special needs. I'm glad to see that, but I think also we need to look on retaining those teachers in place. Number two, the maintenance department at Malcolm X Shabazz High School and it was already mentioned of other schools lacking supplies. Number three, the advocates for children of New Jersey has put out their recent data concerning chronic absenteeism. I know that I and several others presented our concerns at the school board meetings of the last school year and want to continue to ask and demand that the district look very seriously at improving our chronic absenteeism rates. At Malcolm X Shabazz, we did show improvement. It's almost like the improvement you talked about with the POC test. We went from 78% to 76% this year in terms of chronic absenteeism and that is not acceptable. Children who are not in school cannot learn. I brought with me a copy of today's calendar. It's different from last time, so I almost went to the wrong school. I thought we were at Clinton Avenue School, but I want to note that the Newark CPAC meetings are being held. The next one for special needs will be this Thursday at Science Park, 5:00 p.m. It's a public meeting and the parents should be there, but it's not listed on this calendar. Number five, wanted to talk about the POC test. Needs to go, as Mr. Martin said. Across the country, most states opted out, killed off the POC test. There needs to be a new battery. We're not sending a good message to our students if they're failing every year that exams are given, whether or not they had a 10% increase or whatever. We see that only science, technology, and bar did well on this year's battery. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, Christopher Canick.
Hello? Oh, boy. All right. My name is Christopher Canick. I work at Central High School. I live at One Beaumont Place. I'm here today yet again for the third or fourth year to talk about the difference in special need treatment in both charter and public schools. It's got to end and it's got to end soon as long as you're still clinging to this one Newark idea. While you were delivering all of the data, which I'm certain was wonderful, I was crunching my own numbers in the back. There's really only one number that matters and that's the difference of in 2011, $957 per child across the district of Newark. That's $957 that the public schools will spend per every single child as an average from the weighting of special needs in the district. Charter schools take just 9.5% special needs in the district while the regular public schools are taking 15.5 on average, one of the lowest numbers in years. I can't explain this. I can't understand it. I don't understand why it's not in the news constantly that public schools in the city of Newark are taking 63% more special needs children while the charters claim to do more with less. They certainly do more with less special needs children. But the charters receive private funding as well. They have access to uncharted funds. They have the ability to willfully change their board meeting times and locations at will. And yet, Mr. Surf, I believe you were quoted as saying that they are public schools. This is something you remind us on a regular basis and I think if you're to stick with that, you have to hold them to the same standards. My frustration level at this point with this is out of control. I'm going to give you just a couple major statistics. These come directly from Newark's disclosure to the state and for data tracking purposes. I want you to know that the number of high-cost disability, the percentage of high-cost disabilities in NPS is 49.4%. The number of high-cost disabilities in charter schools, and keep in mind, this was last year when a certain underperforming charter school was still open with a vast portion of special needs children was just 31.1%. 49.4 versus 31.1. I don't know how you sleep at night. Good night.
Next speaker, Johnny Latner. Not speaking. Next speaker, Cheryl Smith. Not appearing. Next speaker. Esther Har Abdul Haat. Not appearing. Alterie Fraser.
Good evening, everyone. My daughter is with me. She's going to speak on my behalf. She just went to the bathroom. Can I be after Alterie Fraser, please?
We don't usually let no one speak that's not on the list.
But she's my child. I have everything is written. She just went to the bathroom. I know you can, you can make an exception.
That's fine. We'll allow it because of your medical. But we're going to go to the next speaker. We'll go back to you, all right?
Thank you.
Alterie Fraser.
Alterie Fraser. 494th Avenue, Newark, New Jersey. I want to take this time out first of all to thank all the parents here, all the children that spend the long hours day, week after week, doing what we have to do to prepare for a rigorous day. I want to definitely thank the board, superintendent of schools for being here also. Real quickly, I just want to take the opportunity to definitely shed light on the fact that as a parent in the city of Newark, I thoroughly get to see the ups and downs that our children go through and definitely are a part of aiming to, you know, shape the minds of the young brothers and sisters into something that's going to be productive and constructive for their future. An individual like myself who know what education can do and what education can allow you to become definitely knows how important it is to make sure a quality education is given to all children. So I want to take this time to definitely ask that we find a way to continue to coexist in a fashion where we're able to understand that our decision-making definitely shifts the future of these children. And we need to come to a time where there's opportunity to have true dialogue on issues and facts that are in front of us before we continue to fight and argue. I've been a part of the push towards a quality education for some time now. My children obviously have been a part of charter schools since 2004 to presently I have my daughter in kindergarten as of today. I know what I've chose. I know what people in the city are choosing. They're choosing the direction that's best for their children and I commend that and I support that wholeheartedly. I just ask, I just ask that we pay attention to what today brings. It's 2017, guys, and we have to pay attention to exactly where the trend is going and what's going on. To continue to blame and continue to push the direction towards other individuals or people who are not from a city, if it's, if it's the definition of being from the city, then I would be considered not from the city because I was adopted by foster care and raised outside the city. But I was born in Newark. After Israel lived here till I was six years old, too, I was adopted. I didn't get to get raised in the city. I didn't get to go to school in the city. But does that take away my citizenship, my residency of the city of Newark? And I believe it doesn't. And I believe that as long as we stand together as adults aiming to push our city in the direction that's best suited for our babies and for our futures, I think we're going in the right direction. And to continue to fight and point fingers at each other without actually having conversation, I don't know nobody from either side that I haven't been able to give the opportunity to give hugs and thank yous to. And I want to continue to do that and I want to continue to let everybody know that I'm an open vessel for everybody to definitely be open to. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Ms. Cole, please. Thank you, ma'am. Your daughter can speak. Ms. Cole, this is not the Denise Cole Show. Thank you. Go ahead, young lady.
Good evening, community. I'm here to thank Newark Public Schools, Mr. Surf, Ms. Leah Owens, Ms. Floheisha Johnson, Mr. Brad Hagerty, and Ms. Kelly Williams and all board members for all your continued support to the Gateway to College program. Your collaboration with Director Nikki Constantine, Dean Marvin Mack, and Dean LV of Essex County College has given the opportunity for many young people from Newark to take college classes at Essex County College and earn a high school diploma while also earning college credits toward a college degree of their choice. By your generous and positive support for the Gateway to College program, you have given a second chance to young people to take charge of their lives and make positive decisions toward their success. This program has faced many challenges and obstacles, but your vision, hard work, and resilience has kept it alive and worth fighting for. This academic year, I am proud to announce Gateway to College students are headed for success because of your belief in them to keep going in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Donald Jackson.
This thing is a little prehistoric, huh? All right, Donald Jackson, 79 Tracy Avenue, Little Creek, Jersey. 07108. Y'all already know my address. I've been saying it for the past 15 years. So let me just get this out the way. And this goes for everybody in attendance and beyond. The fight isn't personal. If you've gotten into the political light, if you've gotten to the activism light, you can't take the actions that you see and some of the things that you say personal, or some of the stuff that you hear, personal. If so, you're in the wrong business. And I say that to say, sometimes we get emotional when we come to this mic. I can only speak for myself. I know I get emotional. Some of you have seen me get emotional and some of you even been involved in some of those, right, superintendent? So with that being said, it isn't personal. It isn't a direct attack. But, you know, we have been fighting for a mighty long time in this city and it seems like we're going to have to keep fighting. And, you know, I'm all right with that. You know, I'll fight for the rest of my life. So local control. I've come to this mic and I've expressed my opinion and expressed my knowledge of the law and how local control works and how we all went down a trend and the mayor gave his speech and, you know, took the picture and the whole board was behind everybody in that picture. And I'm just like, you know, we hear the accolades go across and it's not that I'm trying to take away from the fighting and the activism that us Norcas did for the past 25 years, well, 22 years. But I don't think people truly understand what a true dedicated board member does. Maybe some family members of board members could tell you. But from personal experience, it's definitely a thankless and a careless job. I know personally, I spent my personal vacation time, my free time at work dealing with board issues, dealing with board training. So, so it's definitely a lot of hard work. And with that being said, board members, you have to be your own person. You have to go off of the working knowledge that you had, the knowledge that you gained from being here. Don't go off of personal peer pressure. Don't go off of what the phone call was that you just got off of before you sat on the dais. Go off your own knowledge. Go off your own spirit. Because at the end of the day, you will have to answer to the community, not your political bosses. And with that being said, let's not be fooled by an appointed school board. Let's keep our school board elected. An elected school board means that we have the probability and the chance to put the right people in place. Not an appointed board because when you're appointed, you have to answer to the person that pays your bills. And unfortunately, that's a reality here in the city of Newark. So Norcas, I caution you, let's not lose our democratic process. Let's keep the election process and say no to an appointed school board.
Thank you, Honorable Donald Jackson. Next speaker, Donna Jackson.
Good morning. Donna Jackson, 128 Smith Street. Welcome to the Newark Public Schools Board Meeting. Do we need some healing? Yes, we do. But before we can heal, we gotta be truthful. Before we can heal, we gotta understand the process. Before we can heal, we got to know what the damage is that's been done. And there has been a lot of damage done. So, one thing I want to say to my fellow charter community, because when it comes to a discipline issue, a child needing to go to crisis, et cetera, I don't make any difference between children because they all our kids. So I've been to all of them responding and helping parents. But when it comes to these facility issues, in terms of who needs this kind of building, and who needs that kind of building, and who gets air conditioning, and who don't get air conditioning, who gets paint, who doesn't get paint, who gets school supplies, who doesn't get school supplies, who gets SmartBoys, who doesn't get SmartBoys, who gets extra staff and who doesn't get extra staff? Charter school parents, please visit a public school. Because you need to understand the difference. And for those of you that are already at Carver, all you gotta do is walk downstairs. We gave, since we supposed to be together, 10 air conditioning units to Carver at the beginning of the summer. And unfortunately, before the second week of school, you came back and took them. Now, how are we supposed to take that? Kumbaya, can we all get along? Uh, no. Because you think your child should be cool upstairs, and my child should be in a hot box downstairs. If we gonna do it together, then let's do it together and let's tell the truth. Let's please tell the truth. I want all the kids to have air conditioning. So now I gotta go see chat. What schools you talking about getting AC chat, and which ones you not talking about, bruh? Because you ain't gonna come up in here and get four schools this and four schools that and not take care of all the children. Also, we have to have a conversation about this very school. So, most charter parents want their children to go to a magnet school if they're not continuing on the path of the charter that they're in. And most of us want our children to go to if they're high achieving. I want you to walk in this, well, you see the auditorium hot, right? Y'all need about 18 bottles of water? Okay. The ventilation, the ventilation doesn't work. Uh, y'all wanna come outside with us and rally after? If we coming together, then let's come together. I'm serious. Now, I have yet to hear, in closing, I have yet to hear, and we've been doing this battle 15 years, and I'm gonna close with this. I have yet to hear a charter school parent stand at this mic and advocate for both groups. When y'all start doing that, maybe we can talk.
Next speaker, Ms. Robinson.
Hey, how you doing?
How you doing?
Maureen Robinson, 428 Doyle Street, Elizabeth, New Jersey, 76 years old tomorrow.
You go ahead, girl.
God is good. We marched long and hard for local control. We. I would like to congratulate Superintendent Surf and President Markees Lewis for this accomplishment under your watch. Superintendent, you gave us your word that you were going to support our efforts to get local control back in the Newark, New Jersey School District. You kept your word. President Markees Lewis, we marched and fought for local control, and I'm satisfied that it happened under your watch as President of the Newark Board of Education. Again, congratulations to both of you. Superintendent Surf, there is a severe and egregious policy that was implemented under, under the previous administration that I'm requesting that you correct if it's in your power to do so. This district has lost too many good teachers under the policy and practice of principals can remove teachers and/or staff that they do not want in their buildings on whim. Several days ago, I requested a conference with the principal of Central High. She complied. During that conference, the principal reminded me that in no uncertain terms, the district has made it very easy for administrators to get rid of anyone that we, quote, "don't want" in our buildings. I suppose that this was supposed to be the moving part of the conference that was intended to threaten and/or intimidate me for this illegal tactic that was mentioned in every meeting and/or conference that I had with her. Notwithstanding, I wasn't moved, and I shared with her the outcome of my being treated like a second-class citizen, discriminated against, suffering and enduring nepotism, favoritism, illegal transfers, and corruption at the helm of corrupt administrators under the previous administration, and even under her administration to some degree. The legacy that I would like to leave is that I did accomplish something. I did get the Reading 44 system into Central High School in spite of the lie that was told about it already being there.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. And happy birthday if I don't see you tomorrow. Next speaker, Yolanda Johnson.
Good evening. Yolanda Johnson, 278 Goldsmith. One of the features of the charter school movement unknown to some is colocation. When a charter school is permitted to open up in a traditional school building to share space with a functioning school, charter schools hedge in, disrupt, and derail traditional public schools located predominantly in low-income neighborhoods. We see the subtle phase out of George Washington Carver Brew Street School. It's a pattern happening across the country. It creates tension, anxiety, and sabotages schools by causing systematic displacement, for instance, entertaining the idea that Brew Street School can be housed in Elliot Street School from our community. Can you imagine your landlord, if you are a tenant, or mortgage company, if you are homeowner, telling you that you have to share a bedroom in your apartment or a second floor to your home, and because this is top-down order, you must comply? Let's explore possibilities for George Washington Carver and Brew Street School. What if Edward Hugh wasn't enrolling at the enrollment center and negotiating space? What if George Washington Carver Brew Street School wasn't using the turnaround model? What if, what if those families weren't displaced just so George Washington Carver could exist? Board members, what if seek in Newark Public School District had followed Title 18A, 36A through 17, granting renewal of charter, or Title 18A 20-8.2 lease of school lands, or just submitted a proposal by deadline in conjunction with the lease agreement? These are all the possibilities that will have prevented the expansion of space issue that George Washington Carver and Brew Street School is faced with now if we had looked at those possibilities. And lastly, I will leave you with this. Some board members are in conflict and have to recuse him or herself. Moving forward with the vote will bring about ethics charges.
Next speaker, Veronica Branch.
Veronica Branch, 121 Leslie Street. I know y'all miss me. Okay, Hawthorne Avenue. The parent room at Hawthorne Avenue, why is that not being utilized by parents? Parents are told they cannot use the parent room at Hawthorne, uh, Hawthorne Avenue and to use the library. Also, the community engagement specialist, who is he or she? And when was that communication gonna go out to the family members? I also see this letter here about community engagement specialists and the list of sessions going on. But what community engagement specialists do we have at the school? Remember, they was removed last year. So if they were put back, what notification was sent out to the parents to notify them of this? And also, the garden that sits next to Hawthorne. Many of our kids at Hawthorne visit that garden on school trips. Until that garden is cleaned up and removed of the rats, our children should not be going into that garden. Now, on the front of community schools, the community schools that we have in the South Ward, what communication do we have going on in far as the community schools, how are they doing? What are the benchmarks? How much money was given to each school? When is the board gonna give that information? And let us know the status of the community schools and how are they doing? And we want to talk about Life Academy at Bogor. The traffic there, you may not think it's a board problem, but it's a problem to the community that live around there, because these people do not live in Newark. They come and drop their kids off at this school, and they very disrespectful to the people that live there and pay taxes when people are trying to get out of their house to go to work and are told to shut the F up by these parents dropping off their kids. It is very disrespectful, and the line of traffic stretches all the way down Leslie and up Nye Avenue. And something needs to be done about that. A residence check needs to be done at Life Academy because these parents do not live here in Newark. And also, when you talked about the scores and everything for Park and Common Core, we are still holding on to Common Core and Park. We have four states and DC still doing Common Core and, Common Core and Park, where over 20 states then dropped it. Why are we still there? We have nearly a thousand colleges and universities are not using standardized testing as the predictor of getting into college, but yet, yet using the student's four-year grade point average. So why are we still testing our kids like we're test dummies and not really teaching them and going on their four-year grade point average? Thank you.
Gina Medina, Medina, I'm sorry. Gina Medina. Next speaker, Deborah Smith Gregory.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Smith Gregory. And I serve as the president of the Newark Branch NAACP, 454 Washington Street in Newark. I just wanted to speak on four items. I am still knowing that there is a need for a full financial and operational audit of this district. In our return to local control, we need to have a full assessment of the condition and the status of the district by an outside, external, objective, professional firm. The NAACP still stands on a moratorium on charter school expansion. And I know that there is the notion that the charter schools are not expanding. However, the new school, the Met School, was not in Newark. It was in another city, and now it is in Newark. So, there is still expansion. The other item, the work on coming up with an alternative to the One Newark Plan and the transparency committee. I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention again because it seems to have stalled out. And as the board chair mentioned, we must work now in order to make sure that when we get this full control, that we stand to keep it. We don't fight to keep it. We stand to keep it because we know that the house is in order. And we know that the One Newark Plan has a viable alternative, and there is transparency about what is happening. And finally, I understand that you went into executive session earlier today, this evening. But I think that it's also very prudent to call for a moratorium on all consultant hiring until we know exactly what state our district is in. The consultant hiring is, it seems to be out of control. I'm looking at the agenda. And there are some items there that I would ask the board to pay attention to. And we need to know a full assessment of all of the consultants and how much money is actually being spent in the district.
Yacini Avetta. Not here. Next speaker, Lucius Jones. Not here. Next speaker, Venice Roper. Not appearing. Next speaker, Douglas Freeman. Not appearing? Oh, okay.
Good evening. I'm going to speak as a parent, citizen, and taxpayer first, and I'm gonna speak as an elected official. Alright, so let's look at the history of Newark schools. 1854, 16 public schools was entirely supported by public expense. Seven district schools for boys, 518. Seven district schools for girls. One primary school, one school for colored kids. We ain't colored no more. We American, okay? So now, we still have, and I just mentioned about different segments. Now, you mentioned Newark Comprehensive School, magnet schools, charter schools, community schools, and some people may say private schools. Why are you dividing the kids? Why are you dividing the community? Mr. Chair, because you know I believe in presenting it right there to the chair. Do we have segregation in Newark? And why are we segregating the South Ward, which I am from, from the rest of the community? Now, as an elected official South Ward GOP, do you, Mr. Chairman, I want to know why is the majority of the South Ward kids on Park Avenue hanging out by Bercher High School at 9 o'clock without a truancy, without an attendance counselor? And because this is a public meeting, and we believe in Robert was the order, I move a motion, and hopefully the audience will second it, that the truancy department and attendance counselors be reinstated through local control, which is the taxpayers, because we always controlled it. Alright, so we always control the school board. Let's make that straight. Do your payroll taxes, we pay for schools. That's state. Do property taxes, we pay for the local schools. So I am sick and tired of you saying local control. Okay, wait a minute. Local control, state control. Where's taxpayers' control? So at this point, through the South Ward GOP, we're gonna instate so that you understand what's coming. Parents, taxpayers, students, authority. You have a great day. We're gonna make sure that we now bring the students together. Now, the next thing, I was at Staples today, since I got a few minutes. Actual parent says the hot water is not working in the bathroom. The child says that the classrooms are super hot, so how are they ought to learn? The next thing is, back to again, if you're gonna bring up these percentages of 12% of high school students, get them back in the school, Superintendent. They on the street.
Next speaker, Lyndon Brow.
Good evening. Hello, hello?
Hello, hello. Waiting for the mic. Good evening, Lyndon Brown. I just want to share some safety concerns first, and I do have to attest that there are students hanging across the street from Berenjat at the store to 9:00, 9:30. They are several times during the week, and I noticed that as well. I'm also concerned about the safety concerns at University High School and all of our high schools. I want to make sure that metal detectors are in place, that children are being screened for weapons, not so much uniforms and snacks, but weapons and IDs. And I hope that all of our high school students do have IDs this year. The SAT will be administered on October 7th, and we want to make sure that all of our students have IDs who will be taking the test. I've also got some feedback from some residents around Dr. E. Alma Flag School. The residents are complaining that the seventh and eighth grade students are throwing rocks at passing cars on Roosevelt Avenue on a daily basis. So we're asking for increased security around E. Alma Flag during dismissal time. I am very concerned when I see that 20 or more teachers are resigning or requesting a transfer at a given school at one time. That means we need to be looking at the administration and administrative leadership because that's a great loss of great quality teachers when you have that many teachers leaving at one particular time. There is no need for the parent room to be restricted at Hawthorne Avenue School or at 13th Avenue School when we talk about we want to increase parental involvement. It's just unacceptable and our assistant superintendents really need to step up and start, you know, handling some of the tough, making some of the tough decisions that need to be made when it comes to our administrative leadership. Co-location is a continuous problem. It does not work. I saw that firsthand at 13th Avenue School when they co-located with North Star five years ago. It was a disaster. There was disparities with air conditioning and carpeting and instruction. Newark Public Schools students should never be displaced at their schools for the convenience of non-Newer Public Schools students. It is unacceptable, unacceptable. I'm also calling for the Newark NAACP or any other organization to organize a planning meeting so we can create an alternative to One Newark enrollment. We're not going to wait for the transparency team. We're going to set that meeting in motion and we will be sending a alternative plan to the board in November because we don't want January to come around and you to start this enrollment process all over again. So by November, you will be getting from the community an alternative plan. Despite alternative facts, the One Newark enrollment plan is a disaster. Charter school students are returning to Newark Public Schools under credited. We have some students right here at University High School who came here. You know, they required at Newark Prep 120 credits to graduate. Newark Public Schools requires 130. But we have students here with 85 and 90 credits as seniors, and that causes a lot of remediation, additional resources, counseling. We need to start making sure that our charter schools do better and stop taking advantage of our children's academic performance.
Next speaker, James Kip. Not appearing. Kathy Gilmore.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Gilmore, and I too have a voice. I worked for Newark Public Schools at Lewis Muyum Marin as a security guard, which I'm about to take you on a short journey. I worked as a per deen security guard for exactly 24 years, one month, and two weeks, to be exact. I consider myself a veteran as a per deen, although I finally became a provisional seven months ago. I went from $15 to $14.43. Having said that, I feel who would be a better speaker for the per deens more so than myself. It's not fair. What you work, the same amount of time and hours as a permanent guard and sometimes harder and receive nothing. No benefits, no sick time. It's hard. It's just not fair. We as per deen security guards deserve sick days. We too feel we make a difference in the school systems with your children in this district. Speak up and make a difference for the per deens in the schools. Thank you.
Next speaker, Joanne Clark. Next speaker, Hallie Torren.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Hallie Torren. I work for Newark Public Schools Cafeteria, George Washington Carver. And the school is hot. But I'm here to talk about the per deens. We need them. We support them in whatever they do. They need sick days because they cannot come to work in a cafeteria handling food sick. You will get a domino effect. I get sick, the next one gets sick, nobody is working. So we need to give them some sick days so that they can take care of themselves, come back to work, and perform 100% like they should. I don't have too much to say, but that is exactly what I wanted to say. And another thing I want to say is, we are ascending school. We do a 450 school, we deal a 370 and a 135. Why is it that we only get food for 400 and some people? When we do not have enough food to send out, the ordering people are not getting the problem. We are getting the problem. We are getting rolled up, and I think it needs to stop now. So whoever is the person that's saying no to the per deens need to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Belinda Jackson. Next speaker, Thomas Sebang. Next speaker, Frida Barrow.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's been a long time. My name is Frida Barrow. I reside at 20 Irving Ave, Newark, New Jersey, and sometimes at 333 Clinton Place because I'm a teacher. I've been the parent of three and I'm now the grandparent of two Newark Public Schools students. And after 20 years of service, I could say a lot of things about a lot of things. But with the promise of local control, finally, I say peace. At George Washington Carver Brew Street School, we close our daily conversation convocation by saying peace. And it stands for proper education always corrects errors. George Washington Carver Brew Street School has served the community as one of the great cornerstones in the South Ward since 1979. When KIP of New Jersey first lit the spark of co-location, 95% of George Washington Carver Brew Street staff and students had to relocate within the building. Clearly, we experienced disruption and a separation that showed no equality. Our class sizes increased, valuable materials were thrown out, and the Brew Street School lost classrooms specially designed to serve and accommodate our deaf population. All that's now water under the bridge. We, the staff and students of George Washington Carver Brew Street School, hope that this board looks carefully at our resilient spirit and at our commitment over the years. I pray that this board votes to give George Washington Carver Brew Street School room to grow and expand as we all transition to local control and as we continue to serve our communities. Under the new leadership of Principal Kyle Thomas and his wonderful open mindset philosophy, George Washington Carver Brew Street School has added programs like African drumming, culinary arts, therapeutic learning, and yoga meditation. I especially like the culinary arts class. George Washington Carver and Brew Street School has spread her wings, park scores are on the rise, and we are ready to soar like the eagles we are. Peace.
Thank you, Ms. Barrow. Next speaker, Jacqueline Bostic.
Good evening. My name is Jacqueline Bostic-Corder, and I'm alumni of Southside, but I represent Southside slash Malcolm X Shabazz alumni. I'm here to talk about the car, the oil, and the asbestos that is not cleaned up. You can't throw Lysol and then think it's clean. You need to get professionals. You're giving people promotions, you're voting for promotions, you vote to clean up Shabazz because you promised the children auto mechanic, and that's what you're going to get, and you're going to clean it up. Because if we lived in the suburbs in Livingston, Short Hill, it wouldn't be still sitting up in there. Just because we're in an urban city, you're not going to do us any different. And also, the principal that goes here, he should know this school was Clinton Place. It was built as Clinton Place Junior High School. I went here in 65, I graduated, I'm alumni of 67. We did not have air as children. This school has never had air. We used to fold our little papers up and made our fans, and this is what we used to do. Y'all sit here and holler about the children is in, don't have air in school. We didn't have air. We didn't have air in grammar school. We didn't have air in junior high because this was the seventh, eighth, and ninth grade. And we didn't have air in high school. We used to, I graduated from Southside in 1970 in a winter curtain robe, and we were hot as I don't know what. But we learned. That's what we here for, not air so much, but about the kids learning. And that's what you should be up here arguing about. They have to make fans and do like we did, but we learned. Y'all hollering about air, but we never had air in here. We never had air in Southside because they did not build those schools for air. They just building schools. So you get up here and argue about educating our children, not about the air. I care less about the air. I want Johnny to read. When he come to me and he can't read and do math and don't know his sign tables, that I start crying. That's what you get up here argue about. But I want Shabazz to be cleaned up.
Thank you, Ms. Bostic. Next speaker, Paula White.
Good evening. Paula L. White, Democrats for Education Reform, 60 Park Place, Newark, New Jersey. This is a historic evening. Never in the history of attending NPS board meetings have I ever experienced such a substantive report on the progress of district schools. The fact that this evening is an exception to the rule means that the board has been given marching orders and a new charge. You must now approve a template for management to communicate each month to you and to us the public on the academics and the climate and culture of individual schools. In meetings prior to this, you focused on one contract out of the hundreds that come before your board each year, but yet we never heard about the progress of schools. There was a ton of data tonight, but on the state's website, the most recent data shows at GW Carver has only 12% of third graders reading at grade level. Barely one in 10 kids, and most of the other kids are at Level 1, the lowest of the five levels for reading proficiency. The new data that the district just reported on suggests that now instead of one out of every 10 kids at Carver at grade level, we're up to two out of every 10 kids at Carver at grade level. Every school with low proficiency translates to 100 of our children heading down a rocky road to a hard life. So do better by district kids. I don't have a beef with SEEK, but I have a beef with the district. Why? Because it makes me mad to see that Seek Academy's webpage is excellent and focused on learning, but Carver has nothing. For literacy, you know what the Carver webpage says? Check back for more information. For math on the Carver webpage, you know what it says? Check back for more information. And it gets worse. For science, it talks about Bannaker Science Center, and that's been closed for over seven years. Come on, do better. If SEEK is a responsible tenant, execute a good lease and move on. The education of district kids is your charge. With Carver's low achievement, obsolete public information on the website, and 60-plus district schools in all, you got bigger fish to fry. No more focus on real estate contracts? Because if the state commissioner had not lowered the CUSAC bar to measure progress instead of proficiency, the district would still be in state control. Before you talk about having more kids come to Carver in the future, focus on the eight out of 10 kids that still can't read at grade level in Carver right now. You don't plan a Super Bowl victory party just because you won two games in the preseason. That's not how ballgames work, and that's not how school improvement works. You know what? If I said KFC, only one word would come to mind, chicken. You know why? Because at KFC, the primary focus is chicken. Now, what would happen if I played that same game and said NPS? For many families and students, negative words would still come to mind. Your job is to ensure that students in the 60-plus districts' public schools move to exponentially higher proficiency so that when somebody says NPS, only one of two words will come to mind.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Children and success. Thank you.
Next speaker, Antonia O'Sullivan.
Good evening.
Excuse me, Ms. Johnson, please, please. Thank you, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Toni O'Sullivan, and I'm the principal of KIP New Jersey's Seek Academy. Seek Academy has grown to serve 560 kids in grades K4 at George Washington Carver. This is actually my fifth year as principal, but my sixth year working at Carver campus. As an educator in Newark for most of my career, I stand with KIP New Jersey, supportive of making improvements in our schools for all our kids. I'm proud to say that all of the leaders I've worked with at George Washington Carver have wanted the same thing. Over the years, we've held many joint events, trips, professional development sessions for teachers, and we've also worked together to improve the facility. Next month, we hope to jointly support the Breast Cancer Walk in Newark. In November, we're going to be working together on a canned food drive, and we've also got a toy drive coming up in December. I just wanted to stand up here and represent the unity and positivity that I have heard spoken about here this evening and say that I do embrace the partnership that we've had thus far and look forward to an outstanding year ahead for everyone located at the Carver campus. And I look forward to working in continued partnership with all of George Washington Carver staff and leadership. Thank you.
Next speaker, Asia Norton.
Asia Norton, 327 Kear Avenue, members of the board, chair, vice chair, members of the community, for the rest of us that are still here going strong. So I'm here to talk about this little boy that's standing right next to me. His name is Walter. He's my son. I gave birth to him in 2011. I gave birth to him in two thousand and eleven at Beth Israel Hospital, the proudest day of my life. Fast forward, he learned how to swim at St. Peter's Pool where I believe he will, he learned to swim at St. Peter's Pill where he's able to, where he, where he was able to learn how to swim, so sorry. Fast forward, he learned how to ride his bike, they don't care where we live. This little boy that you see right next to me or behind me, wherever he wants to be right now, he's a member of this community. He's a member of the Carver community. He was born in that community and he's still going to be in that community. Right now, I don't think a lot of people are not, are seeing that students at Carver that attend Seek Academy are members of this community. For you to say them, they, it's insulting. It's insulting to my son to say you don't deserve to be in that building. Because when I heard the words get out now, I heard Walter get out now. I heard Kyrie get out now, his classmates. I heard Madison get out now. And right now, I need people to see that these students are NORC students, that these students you are responsible for. Because I voted in this past school board election to have representatives of not just my son, but for the entire NORC community. And so that's why I truly believe that my son and all of his friends deserve to be in that building.
Thank you. Next speaker, Reginald Smith. Not appearing. Next speaker is Nick Underdoom. Not appearing. Alexis Carti. Not speaking. Not appearing. August, I'm sorry, August. Not appearing. Alvina Otrick. Not appearing. Robin Dixon, Dickerson.
Good evening. Robin Dickerson, two thirty-nine Lyons Avenue. I am a parent of a student who goes to Seek Academy. Uh, when I first um agreed to come and speak to the board and speak to the community, I didn't know how heartfelt it was gonna be. We're not here to argue a fight about air conditioning, paint, disagreements. We are looking at children, babies. My son has been a student at Seek Academy since kindergarten. He's now in the second grade. And our last three years have been rough. We have had a major transition, and of course, I don't have enough time to go into it. But my child has grown so much because of the teachers at Seek, because of the love, and not just the education, but what is given to them on an emotional level. Myself as a parent, a single parent, it was tough for me, but I had Seek to help me. And I'm not just here just to be a cheerleader because I feel like we share a school with Carver. We should be one. We should not be fighting. It should be a way that we can compromise and come together. One word comes to mind: home. So everyone, and your home, right, is your sanctity, is your peace. When you go to work, you want to find a work home, right? Because that's the place where you grow. There's growth. You don't want to just go from job to job. It's the same thing for a child. They should have a school home. And the students at Seek has found home. They're, they're growing there. They're, 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 they're making friends, family. And so it's not at the expense of, we can, it's a compromise, right? There's always a compromise. What I ask is that from the bottom of my heart, is that the board members, that Carver, that we can come together at a compromise so that our children can stay at home, so that Carver children could continue to grow and expand, work together. We are not, we're Newark, right? We're all Newark, so we should be one, unified. This is more like an argument, a fight. Why are we fighting? Why? Let's look at grades. Let's look at the children and their behavior. Let's look at those things. That's what matters, not air conditioner. But how much can our children grow in this world and be able to go out and be in the corporate world and be able to stand and fight for a job? That's what we're looking at. Not numbers, but growth. And we, we as parents should be able to choose and decide where we want our children to go. We're Newark parents as well. We are Newark parents as well. Let's come together and stand as one. We are one. It's twenty seventeen, we are one. No more fighting, compromise.
Sadiqua Garson Gamin, I'm sorry. Not, Ms. Ms. Cole, thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Cole and Ms. Ms. Johnson, Ms. Cole, Ms. Johnson, please, thank you. Thank you, thank you so kindly. Uh, Wilhelmina Holder.
Good evening, Wilhelmina Holder, sometimes three oh one West Kenny Street and sometimes four oh three South Onjavon. I have to make up my mind where I live, right? So let me just say this. This issue tonight has never been about equity. That's the real issue here. When someone comes in your home using their invited guests, I blame the district for this horrible position they have put these parents in. The Seek Academy parents are being shortchanged because they said they need space to grow. The George Washington kids are certainly being shortchanged because years ago, I went in there when they first was there, and the inequity still exists and has grown. I'm stunned that we are still talking about this, and what we should have been doing is help Seek Academy find a new home. That's where the discussion now, help them find a new home. I blame the superintendent for not having the vision and the foresight to understand that they deserve a new home. The George Washington Carver family deserves expansion and growth. The Brew Street kids should never be put out of their building. How do you put displaced children out of their building with accommodations? That is a disgrace before God. We're not talking about equity here, all right? Superintendent, I'm sorry, this happened under your watch and you have the black eye on this one. The board, you need to do the right thing and help Seek find a new home. It's not going to work. Co-locations don't work in New York, they don't work in Newark, they don't work in DC, they're not working anywhere. And I think Mr. Brown is absolutely correct. NWACP, Newark Alliance, and any other group secondary that wants to join us, let us have the meetings to dismantle the one Newark enrollment and find an alternative so that we can have equity for our children to be able to access public schools. We have issues that are not going to be resolved if we depend on you guys to come up with the answer. Community, I believe we need to own this. This is something we need to own. Those who have been in the struggle, those who are new to the struggle, we have to own our children. We have to own our vision. We have to own what we want. We cannot wait for the Newark Board of Education, Superintendent, the mayor, or anyone else. We, the people, have to own this. Because equity and inequity is not going to go away until we shape it and make it happen the way we want to happen. And as a matter of fact, dealing with the charter issue, I'm in tears. The charter kids that have been pumped and dumped into West Side, Arts Side, Technology Central, I can name them all, I saw the boxes of kids that are coming into our schools underprepared. We have no resources to support these children. And I mean, they are here and they deserve an education, but you have failed them. When they closed those underperforming charter schools and no one cared, that you put a plan together, they can't even get their transcripts.
Thank you, Ms. Holder.
We need all the children to be able to learn.
We, we got it, Ms. Holder, we got it. Next speaker, Denise Crawford. Not appearing. Tamika Drake. Not appearing. That is the end of our speakers list. Any board members have comments on the speakers?
Mr. Lewis.
Yes, Ms. Fonseca.
That's a lot of information, but I just want to touch one topic. Um, I heard one of the cafeteria workers mention about them becoming a provisional and only getting paid fourteen thirty-three an hour or something like that. I'm sorry?
Security.
Security, I'm sorry. There was a lot today. Um, but I remember I actually presented a resolution last March, I believe, that was voted by the board and um basically for the, to ensure that all NPS employees are paid fifteen dollars an hour. So um I do remember speaking with this Ms. Vow about this um even after the resolution was approved, but it was my understanding that there is no one in the district that's paid less than fifteen dollars an hour, so if we can look into that matter, it doesn't need to be addressed now, but at some point, we can just deal with that. I'd appreciate it.
Yes, duly noted. Any other board members?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Ms. Carter.
Good evening. So um KIP wants me to believe that all students matter to them. I ask you, did our seventh and eighth graders matter to you when you kicked them out of Brugrav and you took over? You could have said then that we would find space for them in one of our schools, but you didn't. You didn't care that they would no longer be able to attend their community school. Your only concern was that you got the space. We are not a board who serves all children. For the record, let's be clear. All charter schools have their own boards who makes decisions on their behalf. We as a board up here have no control over the charter's curriculum, when school starts, nor the salary and requirements of your staff. If you want us to govern all schools, then I urge you to get rid of your charter school boards that exist so that we can do so. At your board meetings, are you discussing how you all can help empower and stand with the students and parents of George Washington Carver? If the price was right and the board allowed you to have the entire space in George Washington Carver, you wouldn't think twice about it. Does it bother you that all your students are learning comfortably and the students downstairs are not? Does it bother you that students are in the same building receiving two different types of education? Do you care what it does to our students psychologically? I doubt it because I never, ever hear you fighting for Carver students. I never, ever hear you coming up for solutions and talking about how we can bring our Carver students up to the level they need to be. Our students to the district are not for sale. I will not bargain with our students' life in exchange for money to fix a building that over the last twenty-two years under state control has been, that has not been properly kept. It is not the responsibility of KIP to do anything to our buildings. It is the sole responsibility of NORC public schools and their job only. Slavery is over. KIP is not our master, nor is their money. We need to focus on developing a plan to enhance and invest in our students in our own district. We need to support the vision of Mr. Thomas, not just in theory, but in action. Who asks, who asks for a twenty-nine-year lease? It is clear that KIP does not care what happens to the district nor the expansion. So I ask for board members to keep that in mind and remember who we serve on this board. We have no jurisdiction over what the charter schools do. So again, if you guys want us to have a say, I say, get rid of your boards and allow us to govern them as well.
Any other board member? All right, let's go on to voting.
Mr. Chair, how are we gonna take these votes? Items one through twenty-four.
Can we take, can we separate twelve, what is it, thirteen, thirteen point twenty-four? We'll separate thirteen point twenty-four, that's the, the lease for George Washington
Is there a motion to vote on all items as a block with the exception of thirteen point twenty-four, the lease?
Motion. Fonseca.
Fonseca, second, Padilla. Motion to vote on all items under Finance Operations as a block with the exception of thirteen point twenty-four, the lease. Move by. Ms. Fonseca, second by Ms. Padilla, all in favor?
Aye.
Any posers abstaining? Okay, we're gonna vote as a block. Is there a motion to vote on those items?
Moving.
Motion. I have Padilla, second. Motion to vote on items under Finance Operations up through thirteen point twenty-three, not on item thirteen point twenty-four. Roll call. Mr. Butzo.
Yes.
Ms. Carter.
Yes.
Ms. Fonseca.
Yes.
Ms. Gaddy.
Yes.
Ms. Garcia.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Padilla.
Yes.
Chair Lewis.
Yes.
Items thirteen point one through twenty-three approved. Is there a motion to vote on thirteen point twenty-four, the lease?
Motion.
Second.
Gaddy, second, Padilla. Is the motion to vote on the lease, item number thirteen point twenty-four, move by Ms. Gaddy, second by Ms. Padilla. Mr. Butzo?
No.
Mr. Chair, we're at discussion.
Discussion, true.
Discussion. We had discussion. Uh, Ms. Owens.
Thank you. Um, so there was a lot said this evening on this particular matter, the lease, and I just want to thank everyone who came out and did express their thoughts and stayed um late to be able to do so. So in follow-up to last week's business meeting, there's a lot of things I want to say, but I'm, I'm gonna cut to the chase. Um, I asked about uh what seventy-five thousand dollars, which is what KIP New Jersey would have to pay according to this lease to Newark Public Schools that would go explicitly towards capital improvements of that facility. So I asked what would seventy-five thousand dollars actually buy because that's not my realm of expertise. And so I asked Ms. Wilson if she could uh supply a list of improvements that are pressing, that are really needed in the facility. Um, so what was provided to me and I shared with the other board members, um is a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars to install AC units in the remaining classrooms, three hundred fifty thousand dollars to rehabilitate a hundred unit ventilators in the classrooms, a hundred fifty-six thousand eight hundred to paint basement first, second, and third floors, and that the total cost for these projects is six hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. We would need to spend approximately a hundred thirty-one thousand six hundred dollars yearly if we plan to complete them within five years. Um, so just taking into account that number, one hundred thirty-one thousand six hundred dollars with the seventy-five thousand dollars from KIP New Jersey, the twenty-five thousand dollars from the rent that would explicitly go towards the facility equalling a total of a hundred thousand dollars, clearly that is short of what is actually needed in terms of making changes in this facility. And even though there would be a committee created uh by this lease with entities from, represented both from Seek Academy and from the district to make the decisions about how to spend the money, the reality is that seventy-five thousand dollars from KIP New Jersey would not cover the cost. And if we also think about the provisions in the lease that says, once the district, uh George Washington Carver Brew Streets enrollment reaches six hundred fifty students, then the district would be um allowed to give notice to Seek Academy, KIP New Jersey, that we need the remaining space in the building to continue to grow, that that can happen pretty quickly. So we're not even looking at the full four years that this lease is for with another year to extend, so let's just say five years that is actually going to see this seventy-five thousand dollars coming from KIP New Jersey. For me, as an educator, education absolutely is- For me, as an educator, education absolutely is first and foremost without a doubt, but I can't sit up here all night and talk about all the educational aspects as though the facility and the environment doesn't count, because it does. So that's why I'm just specifically speaking on this point right now. All of that matters. It all matters. So for me, I could not see voting for this lease with KIP New Jersey only giving seventy-five thousand dollars. I think that KIP New Jersey needs to give more than seventy-five thousand dollars. And also just keep it in mind, whatever changes are made to the building, those changes are made for all of the students in those, in that building. Because what's important is that all of the students are in a safe, comfortable environment so that they can focus on learning. Thank you.
Chair. Thanks, Ms. Owens, for that summary. I also want to provide for clarification for both the board and the audience that there is another one point seven million that the district will be investing in the building. So the district is not shirking its responsibility to invest in the roof, the AC in the auditorium, and I think it's a gym project if I'm not mistaken. The projects that Ms. Owens identified are projects that we know need to be done, but we don't have funding for them at this time. So KIP's, uh, Seek's financial investment is not replacing the district's responsibility, and I want to be clear about that.
Just before we go on, hello? Just before we go on, there's a card that's about to be told. B six six GXV, black Toyota. Clint Place? Clint Place. B six six GXV, black Toyota. Rial four, just go get your car or you won't have it. Any, any other board members? Can you just fix my mic? Alright, that's better? Alright, ready? Just, just before we go to vote, a important note, when we first start talking about this lease, we were talking about twenty-nine years of a long-term lease. We asked the district to go back and negotiate this lease. The lease now is a four-year lease with a possible one year. And we, we're talking about, we, we're talking about supporting Mr. Thomas. And I'm just going to support him a thousand percent because I believe in his leadership. But he need time to grow his school. He need time to grow his school. And Ms. Cole?
Don't entertain it, don't entertain it.
So, so listen, he need time to grow his, his school. Within the four years that KIP will be there, will receive this lease, will receive this rent plus the additional seventy-five thousand dollars to help repair George Washington Carver. To help repair George Washington Carver. When we talk about supporting Mr. Thomas, I'm saying my personal commitment, I know he's going to do it, I know he's going to go walk that community, knock on doors, I'm going to go out there and knock on doors with him and walk that community, help that school grow. Because that's commitment to that school, to George Washington Carver, to help it grow. So today's vote, today's vote is about making sure that we have funds to do certain things in our building, so when Mr. Thomas grow, his building grow, that these kids will have an excellent building to go into. Bottom line. Now can we call for a vote?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman?
So, I, I hear what you're saying and I, I do commend the district for the exchange back and forth, but once again, my position from day one has been, in the midst of transitioning back to local control, that I think it does the next superintendent an injustice to lock this district in, into a long-term lease for four, five, whatever years. I was comfortable with a one-year lease and revisiting this issue again next year, but you know, the conversation went another way. So I'm forced to make a decision. Five years from now, I may not be sitting on this board, so I don't know where the direction the district is going to go in. I clearly have not seen the long-range facilities planned for this district going forward, and I would like to see that. And a host of, another whole, a host of other things is going on. When we talk about schools that are offline, Alexander Street, you talk about Fifteenth Avenue Street School, you talk about all these schools, and today, I don't even know how much money this district is receiving in lease agreements from outside organizations. I don't know the total, the total amount. So that's why I cannot support this tonight, because I think that is locking and tying the hands of our next superintendent, so sorry.
Let's call for a vote.
Alright, this is motion thirteen point two four, again, moved by Ms. Gaddy, second by Mr. Padilla. Mr. Bledsoe?
No.
Sorry. Ms. Carter?
No.
Ms. Fonseca?
Yes.
Ms. Gaddy?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
No.
Mr. Padilla?
Yes.
Chair Lewis?
Yes.
Six yeses, motion carries. Legal items? First item is the authorization for the sale of property at thirty thirty-two Clinton Street. Last, last item is the resolution for legal services. We take them together?
Second.
Fonseca, second. Bledsoe. Taking these items together, all in favor?
Aye.
Any posers abstain? Motion carries, is there a motion to vote on these items?
Motion. Motion.
Garcia, is there?
Second.
Padilla. Motion to vote on all legal items, all in favor?
Aye.
Any posers abstain? Motion carries.
Legal, right.
Remaining item, I'm sorry, program and instruction, sixteen, two, three, and four. Is there a motion to take these items together?
Motion.
Fonseca?
Second.
Garcia. Motion to take the P and I items together, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, is there a motion to vote on those items?
Move it.
Padilla?
Second.
Second, Fonseca.
Bledsoe?
Second.
I think it's Bledsoe.
Ms. Cole? Ms. Cole?
Okay, let's proceed, board members, let's proceed.
Ms. Cole? Ms. Cole?
Thank you, board members, let's proceed with the vote. This is the vote on the P and I items. Moved by Padilla, second by Bledsoe. All in favor?
Aye.
Any posers abstaining? P and I items are approved. We have to address fifteen, I'm sorry, fifteen point two, this personnel item, the resolution for appointing CTO as the appoint authority for civil service purposes. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Padilla?
Second.
Second.
Garcia, this is a motion to vote on fifteen point two, resolution for the designation of point authority. All in favor?
Aye.
Any posers abstain? That motion carries. Hold the new business?
Yes.
Garcia.
I'm, I'm sorry. Fifteen point three, the, we?
Oh, I'm sorry, fifteen point three, we've dealt with, I'm sorry, I mean, thank you for picking that up, I should have said that, thank you. For the record, fifteen point three, we addressed earlier. It was the, it was the personnel item.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to congratulate the district on securing the Hartford grant. With that said, I want to ask our board chair, Marquis, if we can follow up. We know that Fire Prevention Week and Fire Prevention Month will be coming up, the whole month of October, and the city of Newark, along with MPS, used to have a poster contest throughout the whole schools, which was at a local level, county level, and state level. So board, if you could just find out, I have the application, the contact person that I spoke to at the fire safety office in Trenton, and I know a lot of schools reached out to our office, wanting, you know, wanting to participate this year. So if you could please find out?
Yep.
Mr. Chair? Also, wait, also, I'm not done. I'm sorry, it's just a lot going on tonight. Regarding Hurricane Maria, we all know that Puerto Rico is in a humanitarian crisis. I just want to remind any, everyone, along with MPS, our local, state, county, and federal officials, we will be having a donation drive on Saturday, October seventh, and Sunday, October eighth, at eight seventy Mount Prospect Avenue in Newark, New Jersey. All the benefits will go straight to people in Puerto Rico who suffered the catastrophic damages. So if everyone could come out and support, on Saturday, we'll be taking donations. On Sunday, please bring your checkbooks because we're trying to raise a million dollars for Puerto Rico. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Gaddy?
I just want to let the individual board members know and the staff that for the Newark International Film Festival, we had several of our youth participate in that festival through films, Chabas High School, Eastside High School, YMS. There was several other organizations from the district, and I'm going to supply that list to the community engagement committee so that we can acknowledge those students. Two of them actually won the award, one that I'm proud of, The Eye of the Beholder by YMS. My daughter was a part of, of that group, she directed that, and it was about the social conflicts with education and youth. And it was a group of charter school, public school students who came together to put together this film, and it won first place at the Newark International Film Festival. There was another group of Newark students that worked with the downtown district, and they also won first place as well. So I want to supply that information, but I wanted to congratulate those students publicly and the community and the Newark International Film Festival for allowing our children to have a voice in the social, economic, environmental, and political justice issues that impact them on a daily basis in this city. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Carter?
So I just want to put on the record, and I asked the district to look into it. I believe that a vote was taken place earlier that was inappropriate, or there was a conflict of interest, or whatever we would like to call it. And so I asked that the district look into that and we get some legal, a legal opinion on that as soon as possible regarding the personnel vote that took place in the beginning of the meeting.
Noted.
I just want to piggyback off of what Ms. Gaddy said earlier.
Mr. Chairman?
I can go, Mr. Bledsoe? Okay. At our community engagement committee meetings, Dashay and I have requested through Ms. Margarita Muniz to please reach out to all principals, staff members, and facilities to, so we can on a monthly basis acknowledge, you know, teachers, staff, students, you know, in arts, science, reading, just not in sports. So we're still waiting for that request. Hopefully we'll have some names next month.
Any other board members?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So first, I would like to thank my colleagues on this board, again, for supporting the board resolution that was presented this evening. And I also just like to say that, you know, each and every one of you who supported that, it was a great, it meant a great deal, and you have been a part of history of supporting a specific group of students, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other board members? I just want to, I have forgot when we're talking about resolutions, there was also an ed camp that happened on Saturday when, where different educators in the city came together and taught each other, taught, taught each other about the test to how to become administrator, and that group, ed camp group that came together, we gave them a resolution just for a job well done. So that's, we put, I just want to put on the record. Second thing I want to put on the record is that for the next few months, there's going to be some tough decisions that we're going to have to make as a board. I just want every board member to realize and understand that all eyes is on us, so we have to conduct ourselves professionally, and we have to make sure that we focus on the children of the city and of this district, and make sure that we make decisions on the best interest of them. So I want to thank my board members. I also want to recognize that this board will be recognized on tomorrow night by, by the NJSBA. We are now a certified master board for all the training that we have done thus far on our training with the New Jersey School Board Association. So we want to thank, thank y'all all for that training. And also, four of our board members will be going away to our National School Board, Urban School Board Conference in New Orleans tomorrow, myself, board member Dashay Carter, board member Josephine Garcia, and board member Reginald Bledsoe, just to network and get to, get some information that we could bring back to this district so we can become a bigger and stronger district. Thank you, everyone, and see you next month.
Motion to adjourn?
If there's any other business, I'd like to put a motion on the floor to adjourn.
Padilla is her second?
Second.
Gaddy, all in favor? Any opposed? Carries. Good night.
Good night, everyone.